I'll do a fill of these. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If everybody would turn their cellphones to stun or to vibrate, it would be very much appreciated, so they don't ring in the middle of our meeting. We're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records should reflect that all members are present.
Okay, if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, this is going to be led by Deputy Mayor Franklin today.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty, justice for all.
No invocation. Sorry, Joe. Okay. And according to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of a convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And next we'll have approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one item to remove from the agenda, that is item number D2, discussion item number two, entitled Assembly Bill 805, so that will be removed.
Our city attorney, Darryl Piper, will bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session to discuss the items on CS1 today. The council did authorize the initiation of litigation, and further details will be available pursuant to Government Code 54957.1 after that litigation has been commenced.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda are our presentations, and we have actually three tonight, so I'm going to ask my council to come down and join us. Our first presentation will be certificates for the graduates of the City of Vista's Fall 2017 Leadership Academy. So, meet everybody down below. Okay, so when we call your name for the Leadership Academy, will you come forward? Oops, where's my list here? Okay. Starting out with Amaria Aparicio. We have to come and shake hands, remember? We just talked about this earlier, so we told you we have to shake our hands. Okay, our next one is Diana Bartletti. Good, Diana, congratulations.
Thank you.
No pictures? Just shaking hands, apparently. Next is Don Bartletti. You don't get this, this is my list. Leonard Dimaselli. Samantha Escamilla. Garth Hall. Marshall Hope. Carl Higgins. Way to go, Carl. Ariel Luck. Congratulations, John. Cindy Odoman. Shana Schusterman. So, the City of Vista is proud to present its 17th Vista Leadership Academy's graduating class. This academy provides insight to Vista residents on the city's operations and its many responsibilities and functions. Our first academy, conducted in 2007, was an overwhelming success, and every leadership academy has grown since then. Congratulations to our Fall 2017 participants, and so I want to say, congratulations, this is our class, so congratulations. You want to do a photo? Okay, then they have to squeeze together. Over here in the front? Okay, everybody, everybody, everybody up here, up in front. Okay, are we good? Congratulations, all of them. And actually, we do, every year we do a leadership class, so maybe some of you would be interested in doing that. It really is a great class, these guys all could attest to that, they had a, it was very interesting. Okay, the next is a presentation of certificates of appointment to the city commissions, committees and boards, and when I call your name, you please come forward. Lisa DeJoux, is Lisa here? Lisa's been appointed to serve on our Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board, so congratulations to you. The next person is Frances Dummler. Is Frances here? Congratulations, Frances. Frances has also been appointed, or he's been appointed to the Senior Citizens Affairs Commission. Okay, and the next one is Jeffrey Allen Scarno. You're welcome. He's been appointed to the Senior Citizens Affairs Commission. Congratulations. And our final presentation is a proclamation declaring, oh, they're up here for a photo. Who's taking pictures before we move on? Our final presentation is a proclamation declaring October 24, 2017, to be Partnerships with Industry Day in the City of Vista. And so joining me at the podium will be Eric Simon of Partnerships with Industry and Chris Arcey. Are they both here? Yes, there they come. Okay. And while you're doing that, yeah, congratulations. Okay, and I'm going to read, I'll read the proclamation here. So, "Whereas Partnerships with Industry was established in 1985 to provide supported employment opportunities to adults with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities living in San Diego County. Whereas Partnerships with Industry is dedicated to providing the highest quality employment opportunities, job training and support to their clients so they can find meaningful and lasting employment and maximum independence. The Supported Employment Program of Partnerships with Industry is an adult vocational development program that provides specialized productive work training in the Vista's community for individuals with developmental disabilities. October 2017 marks 20 years of collaboration between Partnerships with Industry and the City of Vista. Whereas it is the goal of both the city and the Partnerships with Industry to provide individuals with the opportunity to reach their potential and realize their dream of community employment. Partnerships with Industry embodies a spirit of humanity, compassion and generosity, making them a leader in their field by raising awareness, understanding and acceptance of the value that workers with disabilities bring to this community. Whereas the Vista City Council expresses its sincere appreciation for the overall impact and service that Partnerships with Industry provides to our city, now therefore the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 25, 2017, as Partnerships with Industry Day in the City of Vista." So, congratulations on that. So, would either of you want to say a word here? Would you like to say something? Erica's going to say something? Oh.
Yeah, I have this award here on behalf of the California Disability Service Association. Oh, I'm sorry. And Partnership with Industry, we wanted to present, I'm so sorry. We wanted to present the City of Vista with the Excellence in Employment Award for their
The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless
commitment to diversity in the workplace with providing job opportunities to adults with developmental disabilities.
Thank you. an item is removed from the calendar.
Thank you, guys.
Chris, would you like to say something? Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's secretary, and items removed from the consent calendar will be considered
Excuse me, yeah. My name is Chris Arcey for the Public Works Department, and I just want to thank Eric
immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have eight consent items this evening, C1 through C8, and I have item C4, which is
and PWI crew for the past 20 years, and hopefully another 20 years with us.
the discussion about unleashing dogs on public property, and that one is to be pulled by
They do a great job for the city and the community. Thank you.
the public. So, do I have any other things that anybody wants to pull? Not that I would consider a motion. Deputy Mayor Franklin?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then right now we are going to hear C4, we're going to, we'd like a brief report on that, everybody, I guess, and so.
We have Theron Dykman, our Director of Recreation and Community Services here with us.
Going to do it, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Theron Dykman. I serve as the Recreation and Community Services Director with the City of Vista. Earlier this year, residents requested the city allow dogs off-leash in the natural areas with trails at Buena Vista Park. Trails connect Buena Vista Park to South Buena Vista Park, and many residents have been walking their dogs on these trails for years. Following review by staff, recommendation before Parks and Recreation Commission, and on August 22, City Council approved off-leash dogs in natural areas with trails at Buena Vista Park. In addition, off-leash hours were changed 7:00 to 10:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m. to dusk at both the Buena Vista Park and South Buena Vista Park. Prior to the August City Council action, dogs were allowed off-leash at South Buena Vista Park on public property in the hours of 7:00 to 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. to dusk daily, except holidays. South Buena Vista Park was the only location within the city where dogs were allowed off-leash on public property, and on October 10, City Council directed staff to rescind these changes and return to allowing off-leash dogs at South Buena Vista Park and exclude off-leash dogs at Buena Vista Park. That's all I have for my report. I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Okay, I have several speakers, does anybody, you want to hear them first? Okay. Okay. Councilmember Galera.
I'm just curious, it's a smaller park, but do we have any idea of the numbers of people that actually use the park? Is that something that's tracked at all?
It's currently not a number that's tracked, based on conversations with staff and some of the park users. We're guessing it's dozens per day.
Okay, thank you. Probably, so less than 1,000 people probably use the park?
On an annual basis. Unique users?
Yes.
Or repeat users?
No.
Probably less than 1,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a speakers, I think I have seven speakers here, so we'll start with Brian Seer, followed by Dee Edward Matthews, and then be followed by Charlene Barron. If the other ones will come and stand on the side here when I call your name and wait.
It is Halloween. Hi, my name is Brian Seer. I've been a citizen of Vista for 18-plus years. This came to my attention recently when it got pulled, I really wasn't aware of it even happening, but I believe a lot more discussion needs to be, needs to be in place. There were some previous issues, there still are some issues at Buena Vista Park. The City of Vista obviously can't be there 24/7, and that is with off-leash dogs. I did go visit it on Sunday afternoon. I did see a few off-leash dogs, but they were really up against the natural area. I believe that the off-leash area could go forward in the trails area, as it's called. The off-leash should absolutely, I mean, on-leash should absolutely happen within the duck pond area, any of the grassy areas, and there's been a lot of miscommunication online about this, and to the, what's it called, Nextdoor website. So, I wrote up a little thing highlighting some points. This isn't about the South Buena Vista Dog Park, it's about the Buena Vista trails, not the duck pond. So, anyways, moving forward, I would be actually willing to go out there on my own time, I will print up flyers with the approval of City of Vista, and I will stop every person coming in and hand them a flyer saying absolutely no off-leash within the grass area. I will do that on my own time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dee Edward Matthews, followed by Charlene Barron, followed by Nancy Jones.
Hi, my name's Ed Matthews. I do want to make a little disclaimer, I am Vice President of the Shadow Ridge Homeowners Association, but what I'm saying here tonight is my own personal opinion, it has nothing to do with the homeowners. Please, put the park back the way it was, with leashes. True, we do have the trails that are back there. I'm a runner, I was a cross-country coach at Rancho for years. When you run back there, I can't tell you how many times, well, I've lived in Shadow Ridge since 1988, I cannot, I can count on one hand, rather, how many times I've run through the park and not had a dog, at least one or two, off-leash. One day about nine or 10. Trying to run through that is not a whole lot of fun, and if you mention anything to the residents or to the dog owner that there is a leash-free area just south of here, you get yelled at. I've been called every name in the book, I've been chased by a few of the owners. Rancho Buena Vista's cross-country team uses the park. They have a couple meets there, they use it for training, the middle schools also have meets there. Having dogs in there off-leash is just not, not what should happen. Get something north of Highway 78, we also already have South Buena Vista Park leash-free. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just for your information, I just wanted to let you know that we directed staff to introduce an ordinance going back to the previous rules, and so that's what this is about tonight, that's on our agenda tonight, is to go back to the previous rules and then to send the question to the Parks and Recreation for exploration and recommendations, and so that's, that's what is on our agenda tonight. So, Councilmember Franklin, did you want to say something before I go on?
No, after the speakers.
Okay, after the speakers, okay. Okay, so Charlene, followed by Nancy Jones, followed by, I think Tom Missit.
My name is Charlene Barron, I live on Sonora Court in Vista. First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Franklin for coming and walking with me one morning early, we did the whole loop, and I think it was helpful for him to see the context and to understand the context for the requests that we made initially. I'd asked the other members also to come and walk with me. My request today is with regard to the recommendation on the agenda, which says to introduce and adopt the council ordinance. I'm asking you to defer adoption of the ordinance until such time as there has been a referral to Parks and Recreation, there's been a public, an opportunity for public input other than, than what you've already had, and a recommendation that would come forward that would include not just, not just the hours for off-leash, but enforcement of the duck pond, dealing with safety issues, dealing with people who don't pick up after their dogs and so forth. I mean, this really is a much bigger request. If you do not defer adoption, then you basically leave us, the proponents of this request, to start all over again. You leave us without recourse, because there's nothing within what I've read so far that calls for a return to the city council on a date certain on this. So, my request simply is to defer action on this, this item until such time as Parks and Recreation Commission has had an opportunity to review this and make a recommendation to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Jones, followed by Tom Missit, followed by Lenell Serrana.
I'm Nancy B. Jones, I'm past president of the Women's Club of Vista. I want to thank Charlene, who started this. She asked for off-leash hours because that's the way it was. I've walked there at the park for 30 years, and I've never seen a single bit of enforcement. If we want to allow off-leash, we need to have enforcement. The signs at the park for all these years have announced dogs must be on leash. Just because dog owners choose to ignore that ordinance, that doesn't mean that off-leash should be allowed. It's all about enforcement, otherwise, nothing will change. I got a communication from a friend who walks there with dogs. She says she was there four times, and each time, somebody got out of the car, and this was not during off-leash hours, someone got out of the car, four people got out of the car, and their dogs were immediately let loose, which means they were right over there to the duck pond. There's no enforcement, if it's not clear, then this is going to continue to be a problem. And as Charlene said, we need to look at enforcement, we need to look at safety, we also need to look at the dog messes. So, in the last couple of years, I've noted, noticed the proliferation of abandoned dogs, poop, well, we could call it, the problem is doggy defecation disposal, okay? On July 16, only loser's litter, we picked up 12 bags, and there were at least 12 more piles that people hadn't even bothered to put into bags. They are a health hazard because we know poop pollutes, and it's very unsightly. It mares our enjoyment of the park's natural beauty, so I sent layers, letters to the mayor and city council, asking for at least one more trash can. There is a kiosk that is 200 feet in, a Boy Scout, Eagle Scout project, and that needs to have a dog poop, excuse me, a trash can, and it's 200 feet in, and city said, our employees will not do that. Now, I think 200 feet is not asking too much, because within that 200 feet, one time I saw three bags that were just abandoned, no, they don't get picked up when people leave. So, there should be a trash can at that shade gazebo, and if an employee has to walk, then it should be done. Another trash can, I think, is right, the access where the fire station is. Last time I walked, I noticed one. So, thank you for your consideration, reconsideration of this ordinance.
Thank you. Tom Missit, followed by Lenell Serrana, followed by Leonard Finkel.
Hi, Tom Missit. You guys are about as sick of this as I am. I'm here tonight really to talk about the last council meeting you had, which, I've been in the business of reporting news for 60 years, and last, last council meeting was one of the biggest shams I've ever seen. First of all, your ordinance reads that the dogs remain within the natural areas served by the trails within, within Buena Vista Park. Mr. Franklin's poll, which I would have, I'd signed up against it on this one, and he knows, but he's in the business, says, should dogs be allowed off-leash in Buena Vista Park? That's not the question. The question is, should it be in the natural wilderness area known as the trails? And then when you choose one, it says dogs should be leashed in Buena Vista Park. Well, you can throw that poll out, I mean, I can write a poll to give you anything you want. We will then treat it by Mr. Garrison with a three-minute slideshow that probably had 16 slides, and of the 16 slides, I'd say 13 of them were fraudulent. Any one of those that you saw last week with the grass in it, that ain't where the ordinance is talking about. So, I just wanted to get that squared away. Then it seemed to be a big deal about the cross-country track team. So, I went over, and you guys have got this in your package, I went over and I met with the coach and the principal of Rancho Buena Vista School. The principal was wanting to understand, it was the whole park, just like everybody else was, because that was the theme that the Antae people were trying to, why, I don't know. But you weren't, you drank the Kool-Aid the last time. I asked then, how many, how many cross-country meets do you have? Three. Do they all use, do they use trails? Yes. What's, what's the season for off-track, cross-country? August through November. And they use it to practice about once, they said it's less than once a week, but more than once every two weeks, so I put two weeks in, which put every 10 days. The other class they have there is a mountain bike class.
We will then treat it by Mr. Garrison with a three-minute slideshow that probably had 16 slides, and of the 16 slides, I'd say 13 of them were fraudulent. Any one of those that you saw last week with the grass in it, that ain't where the ordinance is talking about. So, I just wanted to get that squared away. Then, it seemed to be a big deal about the cross-country track team. So, I went over, and you guys have got this in your package. I went over and I met with the coach and the principal of Rancho Buena Vista School. The principal was understanding it was the whole park, just like everybody else was, because that was the theme that the Antae people were trying to, why, I don't know. But you drank the Kool-Aid the last time. I asked them, "How many cross-country meets do you have?" "Three." Do they all use, do they use the trails? Yes. What's the season for off-track, cross-country? August through November. And they use it to practice about once, they said it's less than once a week, but more than once every two weeks. So, I put two weeks in, which put every 10 days. The other class they have there is a mountain bike class, which is really not, it overlaps by half an hour when the off-leash laws would be in effect. The rest of it's from 9:30 till noon. Okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Lanell Serrana, followed by Leonard Finkel, followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Hello, my name is Lanell Serrana, and I'm from 1979 Oxford Court. So, I'm right next to the dog park. And my husband and I probably use that park, well, we used to use it daily, probably every other day where they're either biking, or walking, or hiking, or doing something. I love dogs. I like dogs off-leash. However, I sometimes do find that when I'm running or walking by myself in the park, that there are some dogs that will run up to me and kind of get in my way, especially with when I'm biking. And sometimes, you know, it's a little bit frightening if I'm not going, you know, I'm not a speed demon, but when I'm going down a hill or something, and a dog jumps in my path, I don't want to hurt the dog, and I don't want to hurt myself either. So, I feel that maybe even if we could establish not eliminating all the dogs to be on leash all the time, or off-leash all the time in your times, but maybe having different hours, or maybe setting it like Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, it's, you know, on leash, and Tuesday, Thursday, it's off-leash, or something like that, so that the people that want to use the park and just ride and not have any problems, or run, or whatever, can have some on-leash time, and we don't have to worry about the dogs. And then, at other times, we'll just go somewhere else. So, I'm thanking you to look at this again and maybe make some, you know, different consolidations for both of us. Obviously, it's dividing the community. I'd hate to see that happen, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Leonard, followed by Stephanie Jackel, followed by Kim Cameron.
My name's Leonard Finkel. I also live at 1979 Oxford Court, and I'd like to thank the council, especially Deputy Mayor Franklin, for reconsidering this issue. My personal feeling, well, first, I'm the treasurer of the South Vista Communities, although I speak for myself. I think it's just safer if the dogs were on leash, but I understand the different perspectives. And from all the people that I've spoken to, it seems the vast majority would prefer to keep the park on leash only, especially since literally a couple blocks away, you have the dog park at South Buena Vista. And I just think it needs more discussion, and the majority of the people, the way they feel is the way the council should vote. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Stephanie Jackel, followed by Kim.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Jackel. I live at 1500 Green Oak Road in Vista, and I'm speaking on behalf of South Vista Communities. We hope very much that this evening you will put Buena Vista Park back to an on-leash status, while, we hope, you will direct the Parks and Recreation Commission to look at it very broadly and with as much public input as possible, and then bring a recommendation back to you. I am hoping that you and the commission will carefully consider these points. What is the current daily use of Buena Vista Park? Who exactly is using it, and at what times of day? Are these uses compatible with off-leash dogs? Is there truly a need for off-leash space in addition to that at South Buena Vista Park? Why? Could South Buena Vista Park be improved instead, so that the additional space would not be needed in Buena Vista Park? Are there areas in other city parks where off-leash space could be designated, rather than at the Duck Pond Park? And finally, and very important, is the city prepared to monitor and enforce its regulations, whatever they end up being? From comments at tonight's meeting and other meetings, it appears there is no enforcement, and that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Cameron.
Hi, I'm Kim Cameron. I live at 1470 Fern Place Vista. I was here two weeks ago to talk, and I just think we should really, you already have an off-leash dog park, and it's right around the corner. They have the trails. And this weekend, I did the Vista Run, and there were several dogs off-leash, and they got in the way of the runners. So, I mean, the inaugural bear run. So, and the owners don't care whether the dogs are off-leash or not, and they're not supposed to be, but there's no one out there. So, the problem is, is people say, "Oh, set a time." They don't follow the laws anyways. The times aren't going to make a difference. So, if we could just do South Buena Vista Park and trails to be off-leash, and then ours to be on-leash, that would be great. And then, everybody has their own safe trails. Thank God, I thought that was mine. So, because no one follows the rules. So, if you set times or days, they don't follow them anyways, the off-leash people. Well, the majority of them, because then, when I'm out there and it's supposed to be on-leash, they're off. So, and I have a dog I love to walk, but I can't walk her on the trails right now, because she likes her personal space like I do. I'm sure you guys don't want people running up into your personal space. Well, my dog doesn't want, a dog's coming up into her personal space. So, and it's going to happen unless we have two different parks, and there's already two different parks. So, it's amazing that this is even an issue. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. That is, Kim was our last speaker, so Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Well, I just want to thank all of the residents who came tonight and two weeks ago to speak on this subject, and I want to thank those who've spent even more time working on this issue, including Mrs. Barron, who I would thank for inviting me to walk with her. I was very heartened by the community of users that are there on a regular basis to use the park, and I can attest that the behavior was very friendly, and the control of the dogs was excellent for the majority of the users that we encountered, and that I encountered during numerous visits to the park in the last month. That being said, I did conduct the poll, but the poll was really a response to an immediate influx of communication that I received from citizens after our meeting of September, I believe it was 25th. I didn't, I was totally surprised. Logan Jenkins wrote an article and said that I hadn't read the manual on how to be a city councilman. If there is such a manual, I hope I could receive a copy of it. I'm still learning. I'm a citizen policymaker, and I totally underestimated the interest of the community in this issue. And I think what this really comes down to is really about the process, and that's what I heard from citizens who were on both sides of the subject. And I think we really learned after Bub Williamson Park, and I somehow wasn't yet able to apply what I'd learned, but now I definitely am. And in the future, when changes do come to our parks, I think it's so important that we do post signage at the park, that we announce where citizens can provide their input about proposed changes, that we offer them the ability to attend a meeting in the park, and that we really do our homework and reach out, because these parks amount to amenities to people's homes. They've, you know, they've lived here for years, or they buy a home, and this is part of the amenity of their home, and it is very, you know, it's very valuable to them, and there are very emotional feelings about the parks. And while I do know that incidences of, you know, animals being attacked, or humans being attacked by dogs, is limited and rare, there were a number of individuals who did reach out to me and let me know that they had had those problems, or that their fear and apprehension about using the park had precluded them either recently or for a number of years to use the park. And I did, in using the park, I did learn that there is a large community of Carlsbad and Oceanside residents that do use the park, and some, you know, I think the park has developed a bit of a reputation as a good place to come for off-leash. And I heard from folks on both sides of the issue about the need for enforcement near the duck pond, and so I definitely think, and that is part of what we're doing. We gave direction two weeks ago that we would like to discuss those issues, as well as to direct the Parks and Recreation Commission to return to a discussion about this issue. That's what we're considering here tonight. Included in that is that they would post a sign of four feet by four feet with at least 30 days' notice at the park, and that we would make other means to let the community be aware of a meeting that would take place at the park, and where those who couldn't attend the meeting would have an opportunity to submit email and other written comments. And so, I think, really, for everyone on both sides of the issue here, if we improve our process, and I know that we can, and I know that we desire to, to give everyone an opportunity to be heard and everyone's opinions to be considered, I think that would please a lot of our voters, I certainly know. I've heard that again and again. The poll had 454, to this minute, citizens participate. It was limited only to those individuals who do live in the city of Vista. All those individuals are registered at their home address, and so, while it may not constitute a scientific poll, and I don't claim that it does, it does give us the opinions of 454 Vista residents, and I certainly think that that is very valid in trying to understand what the community wants. And presently, it's 56% in favor of returning to the leash law at Buena Vista Park, and 40% who favor the new policy. So, it's a 16% advantage. And for that reason, I submitted 78 pages of correspondence, which included correspondence from more than 100 residents. Since that time, I've probably received from another 25 residents in the interim communications asking on both sides, but there is a very strong desire for us to have a more fully-developed conversation about this issue. And as I've said before, I would really like to find, and there is a strong desire for those who want to walk their dogs off-leash, there is a strong desire to find a suitable place and accommodation for those residents, and that's something I'd really like the Parks and Rec Commission, and they've signaled that they would like to talk about that issue, and I'd really like to have a really robust conversation, and I'd like to find an accommodation for them. I'd like to make as many folks happy as possible. So, that's all I've got to say on this issue, and I appreciate the council's time.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers. Anybody else want to say?
But I would make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented to us by staff.
Okay, Councilmember Aguilera.
Well, I wasn't here two weeks ago, so all this is a little bit surprising. I'm not exactly sure why we're here, because I know a couple of months ago, we made a decision, and we were going to look, I don't think we were very comfortable with the decision at that time, so we left it for one year to review, and I think all of this is part of that process. But nonetheless, we're here tonight, so we're taking another crack at it, I guess, and taking a different approach, so. My goal is to give access to as many people in the community to our parks. And it does, I hate to hear when people write me and say that they don't feel comfortable going to a park, but I, you know, because I think that everybody pays for these parks through their taxes, and they all have the right to be there. And what I hope comes out of this is that it does go back to the Parks and Rec Commission, and we look at ways to accommodate, hopefully, both sides. I'm not sure if that's possible, but if it is, that would be fantastic, because that would give the most access to the citizens of Vista and the people of North County. I don't really have a problem with people of Carlsbad and Oceanside coming to Vista. To me, that's a good sign that, you know, we're doing some things right, and people are coming to our city because they like what we're doing. But at the same time, you know, I want to listen to the people of Vista and accommodate them first. And again, my goal is just to activate the park. That's why I asked that question earlier about how many people actually use this. You know, it's a small number, you know, but hopefully, we can increase that number. And I'd just like to move on from this subject, because I think we have some things, like solutions for change, the homeless, and other items that are very important to the city of Vista. So, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Theron, well, sorry. I have a question for you. What, I think some people are changing, interchanging Buena Vista Park and South Buena Vista Park, not recognizing that those are two distinct parks, and Buena Vista Park is the one that is commonly referred to as the Duck Pond. And so, when we had our last council meeting, the issue was off-leash dogs at Buena Vista Park. Am I correct?
Yes, you're correct.
Thank you. So, the final, the final motion at the last meeting was about South Buena Vista Park. And I'm not sure how we got to that point. And when you look at the motion, motion to direct staff to introduce an ordinance reflecting the previous rules regarding the allowance for unleashed dogs on public property within South Buena Vista Park. And I really thought we were talking Buena Vista Park, and I hear some of that confusion here this evening as well. So, my question is, and I know this question was asked at the end of that meeting, what are the rules right now, as of today, at Buena Vista Park, commonly referred to as the Duck Pond?
The rules today for Buena Vista Park in the natural areas with trails, not the mowed areas with the parking lot in the Duck Pond itself, are reflective of the council's direction as of August 22nd of this year, which authorized off-leash hours at the park. Your actions tonight, if approved, would then rescind that, and it would have 30 days from this time in which they would become active.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I'm looking at the ordinance in the book, and it says, "The unleashed dog is," well, it says, "An ordinance of the city council of the chartered city of Vista, California, amending section 12.14.010 of the Vista Municipal Code regarding unleashed dogs within South Buena Vista Park." Now, my understanding is we never changed anything in South Buena Vista Park this summer or fall.
That's correct. That appears to be a typo.
Okay, because I think that's where we have.
Councilwoman, if I could interject here, it's not a typo, and, sorry, it's, what it is, it's removing Buena Vista Park from the ordinance for unleashed dogs during those times, but it's still maintaining what's been in place for a number of years, which is allowing unleashed dogs to go into South Buena Vista Park during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00, and then 3:00 till dusk daily.
Well, I see the hours in here, putting it back to the hours that are already there, so I didn't quite understand what that was. So, perhaps you can clarify, what is going on at Buena Vista Park right now?
So, currently, so the city council on August 22nd gave direction, passed an ordinance to go forward, to allow for unleashed dogs at Buena Vista Park during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00, and then 3:00 to dusk, in the, as Mr. Dykman said, in the open areas, as well as the trails. That's what's currently existing. So, if the council goes forward with this ordinance tonight, 31 days after approved, if it's a four-fifth vote, that would revert, and Buena Vista Park would not be allowed for unleashed dogs in the open areas or the trails. But in South Buena Vista Park, what has continued for a number of years would be able to still continue by adopting this ordinance. And then, as Mr. Franklin mentioned, we will work with the Parks and Rec Commission. We will go through probably a number of meetings, in addition to the workshop held at the park, get the feedback, and then get a direction from the Parks and Rec Commission, and ultimately come back before this body.
I'm just not seeing anything specifying Rancho Buena Vista Park. It just, it just all says South Buena Vista Park.
Councilwoman? And it's silent to Buena Vista Park, because that's not going to be allowed for unleashed dogs.
May I offer a point of clarification? So, paragraph A, under the current ordinance, which was adopted August 25th, includes a provision for Buena Vista Park to be off-leash, and this paragraph A will replace the existing ordinance, and the new language will only allow... And the new language will only allow off-leash in South Buena Vista Park. It was very confusing and, yeah.
It's very confusing when we're talking about one park.
Yes.
Everything in writing is about the other park.
But I did want to make clear to the community that we are not proposing any change
Right.
at South Buena Vista Park. And I also did make a recommendation to the Parks Commission that they examine giving a new name to one of the two parks, because the names of the parks are so very confusing, and Commissioner Halas had some excellent ideas that I hope the Parks and Recreation Commission will discuss with regard to that. But it is confusing, but this will totally replace paragraph A, and therefore, and what we're really doing is adopting language that was identical to the language that was in effect prior to August 25th.
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor. I think the community has already named Buena Vista Park. Kind of sounds like it's the Duck Pond. But, no, I'm, thank you. But I do agree, as we said at the meeting two weeks ago, that this whole issue with having leash or off-leash, on-leash or off-leash at Buena Vista Park by the Duck Pond, came about because the process had not been followed through to its mandated conclusion. There were, there was no notice to the community, there was not, there were not adequate notice to the community, the surrounding community, and there weren't any meetings held, and so many people had no idea that this was, change was happening, which is why we needed to rewind this so that we could do this process correctly and allow everybody's voice to be heard, not just a few people. So I appreciate that we're doing that. I think some of the verbiage in here is just too confusing for some people, and thank you for the clarification. I just want to make sure that we know which park we're dealing with and what changes are happening to which park.
Councilwoman, would you be willing to offer a second to my motion? My motion was to adopt the ordinance that's before us.
Yes.
Okay, I see no other, anybody else? Okay, I don't see anybody else pushing their buttons, so I would say we have a motion and a second, so cast your votes. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so it's back to how it was. The short version.
It will be.
It will, oh, it's not yet?
No, in 31.
In 31 days, it will be back to where it was. Apparently, we have to give it time to do that, so, okay. So now I've lost my agenda. Okay, next thing on our agenda, there are three public hearings this evening. The first is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding planning case number P-17-0226, Raising Cane's Restaurant. So the public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Mayor. John Conley, Community Development Director. With me, I have Michael Ressler, our principal planner. He was the project manager, and we will be presenting the Raising Cane's application.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is a specific plan amendment, a special use permit, as well as a site development plan for a proposed Raising Cane's restaurant. The application number is P-17-0226. The project address is 303 Vista Village Drive. The site is generally located on the northeast corner of Vista Village Drive and West Vista Way. The site is one legal lot. It maintains an area of 1.37 acres, and the site is currently developed with a vacant 6,800-square-foot restaurant building, which was formerly occupied by the Famous Dave's Barbecue. Surrounding land uses include a Rosati's Restaurant to the north, Creek Walk Park to the east, Chili's Restaurant to the south, as well as automobile storage to the west across Vista Village Drive. The general plan land use designation for the site is mixed-use. The mixed-use land use designation would allow for uses such as commercial uses, eating and drinking establishments. The zoning for the site is downtown Vista-specific plan. The site is located within the West Gateway Planning Subdistrict. Uses permitted within that subdistrict would include commercial retail as well as restaurant Currently, the downtown Vista-specific plan prohibits drive-through restaurants. However, there were exceptions made for the three existing drive-through restaurants when the specific plan was established. On March 14, 2017, the City Council had a discussion regarding a proposed amendment to the downtown Vista-specific plan to amend the document and allow a drive-through restaurant at 303 Vista Village Drive. At the conclusion of that discussion, the City Council had a consensus and directed staff to accept a formal application to allow a drive-through restaurant at 303 Vista Village Drive. The project before you tonight would require a specific plan amendment, a special use permit, as well as a site development plan for the construction and operation of a Raising Cane's restaurant. Specific plan amendment would allow for a drive-through restaurant at 303 Vista Village Drive. The project includes demolition of the existing restaurant building and construction of a 3,935-square-foot drive-through Raising Cane's restaurant. Raising Cane's provides chicken fingers, side dishes, as well as a variety of soft drinks. The hours of operation for the proposed facility would be from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Monday through Thursday, and 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Friday through Sunday. The submitted site plan proposes demolition of the existing building on-site and construction of a new 3,935-square-foot drive-through restaurant. The site plan also indicates a new drive-through lane, which would span along the southerly, easterly, and northern edge of the new building. The front parking lot would reconfigured to accommodate 44 parking spaces, and when combined with the 18 parking spaces within a satellite parking lot area, the site would maintain a total of 62 parking spaces, which exceeds the code parking requirements of 50 spaces. The floor plan for the restaurant has been configured to provide occupancy for 88 patrons, as well as provide area for service, a service counter, kitchen, storage area, as well as restroom facilities. The architectural style of the proposed building is considered contemporary. The building would exhibit a smooth brown stucco exterior finish, and enhanced with a tan color trim, as well as stack stone accent treatments. The building has been designed with a horizontal parapet roof system, and also exhibits a variety of tower elements. Other architectural enhancements would include steel canopies with decorative outriggers, a flat canopy at the front entrance of the building, accent lighting, as well as new storefront systems. Here is a perspective of the proposed flat canopy at the front entrance of the building. Staff notes that this element was included as a response to the Planning Commission's concerns regarding the architecture of the building. The applicant is requesting a specific plan amendment to amend the downtown Vista-specific plan. The amendment would allow for a drive-through restaurant at 303 Vista Village Drive, subject to the approval of a special use permit. Future modifications to the drive-through restaurant would require the plot plan review process. In regards to the general plan, the proposed use is consistent with the mixed-use land use designation. In regards to zoning, the project meets all applicable development standards for the downtown Vista-specific plan. It's consistent with other uses within the area. The site has been designed to provide successful onsite circulation, and the drive-through has been designed to provide adequate queuing spaces. The Planning Commission reviewed this project on September 19, 2017. At the conclusion of that meeting, the Planning Commission approved resolutions recommending City Council approval with a vote of 6-1. The Planning Commission did include two additional conditions. One condition being an additional exterior color enhancement, and the second would be a limited business model that future businesses would need to comply with, which would be a minimum of 25% of the restaurant diners being walk-in patrons. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has revised the elevations for the building. The elevations on the left-hand side of this slide represent the original elevations presented to the Planning Commission. The elevations on the right-hand side of the slide represent the revised enhanced elevation. Staff notes that the applicant incorporated a new tan trim color. The applicant actually squared off the roof elements for the tower features to actually mimic the architectural style of the building, and the applicant also included a flat canopy at the entrance of the building in order to enhance the architectural elements associated with the building. With that, staff is recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance approving a specific plan amendment to amend the downtown Vista-specific plan to allow for a drive-through restaurant at 303 Vista Village Drive, subject to a special use permit, as well as a resolution approving a special use permit inclusive of a site development plan and a comprehensive sign program to demolish the existing restaurant building and to construct a new 3,935-square-foot drive-through restaurant at 303 Vista Village Drive. And that concludes staff's report. Representatives of Raising Cane's is here to provide the City Council with a presentation. The applicant, as well as staff, is available to answer any questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I have speakers. I want to hear from the applicant first, which is Kirsten Roberts.
Okay. I'll introduce myself very quickly. Kirsten Roberts, Raising Cane's, 6,800 Bishop Road, Plano, Texas, Property Development Manager, Fry Cook and Cashier. Thank you again for having us in front of you. I want to tell you, it's hot here today. I left Dallas this morning. It was 60 degrees, and was very surprised at your temperatures, but that's all right. But it's a nice heat for me. It's a good heat. Do I need to wait until Councilmember Green returns? Okay, all right. Well, I've spent a lot of time in front of the Planning Commission, as well as yourselves, and really talked about the history of Raising Cane's, and how it came about, and our namesake and things like that. So what I wanted to do this evening, very briefly, is touch base on some things we do for the community, as well as some numbers that have been in restaurant news lately, and just some things like that, and maybe answer any questions you may have about the company itself. We focus on six areas: education, feeding the hungry, pet welfare, active lifestyles, business development and entrepreneurship, and then my favorite, everything else. We do pride ourselves not only celebrating these things in our company, but also in every community that we're a part of. And it's just, it's very important to us, and all these are California photos from, except for Cane down in the bottom there, but these are all events throughout California over the past year. And speaking of giving back, 2017 to date, and these are just the five restaurants we currently have in California, over approximately 30,000 has been given in food donations, 60,000 just in local community activities, and 30,000 in various sponsorships, and that doesn't include the rest of 2017. And one of the main items I would like to point out is, before we even open a restaurant, our entire crew, once they're hired, volunteers with an organization within the community and are able to raise at least a minimum of $1,000 to present to that organization on the grand opening morning. Would also like to point out that as soon as we start moving dirt, even sometimes before on a site and in the community, we have crew here, here in Vista, hiring, marketing, building partnerships, building relationships, and really just trying to garner this support and become and immerse themselves in a part of the community wherever we are. And also, given the proximity to your beautiful downtown, and was able to drive through there, I know there's an organization, I believe, that helps, an association that runs that, and I think it'd be a great opportunity to partner. We'd be bringing people, we're a destination, and we're a community center, and we're just all those things, because we just, we're who we are where we are, and we just hope that we can bring a number of people here into Vista. Just to toot our horn a little bit, in the restaurant news, June 2017 edition, Raising Cane's not only set the pace for sales growth among chicken chains, and no others will be named in this presentation, but we're also the fastest-growing chain in the top 100, and we're very proud of that. And I know this is difficult to see. Do you have this easier to see, or have you seen? I just want to, I know it's hard to read, but in sales for 2017, Raising Cane's ranked 77th. Okay, good, thank you. Quite a jump from 92nd in 2016. And although we're a privately-held company, these numbers that you see, is this a pointer? Oh, look there, right up in here, those are actually in the millions. And while we agree with them, we also feel they're slightly conservative. So being privately-held, that's about as much as I'm able to offer with that. Just some more information from the restaurant news article. Can you read that? This is one of the main items I wanted to show you, just to kind of give you an idea of where Raising Cane's will pull people from, or is pulling people from. The Caniac Club is kind of like our frequent flyer card, if you will. It's a customer appreciation program, and all the dots that you see there are Caniacs that have come to the Laguna Hills site and used their card. This is not just a one-time hit, it's if, however many times that that Caniac has come and used that card. The credit card data wasn't available to kind of show the sales percentages from the surrounding areas, but this hopefully will give you an indication of just how far folks will be, will come in for our chicken fingers. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, we're very excited for the opportunity and look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. I have three other speakers. Do you want to hear them first? Is that okay? Okay. Next speaker is Chris, it looks like Crestier, followed by Cliff Kaiser, followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Good evening, Council. I'm Chris Crestick. I live in Vista, and I am an RBV student and football player. I'm here to talk today about Raising Cane's, a drive-through restaurant. I spoke about a month ago at the Planning Commission meeting that was said. I just wanted to come back tonight and really reiterate like what I said last month. Many of you might have been there last time, but many more of you probably weren't there, so you have no idea what I'm talking about. Tonight, unlike last month, I'll be sharing with you how these chicken fingers have not only impacted the state, but my family, friends, and even my life. First of all, I'm just a regular teenager. I go to school at RBV. I play football, and like most of us, I love food. Raising Cane's is one of the best restaurants I've ever been to, and many others can attest to that. Yes, it's just a fast-food restaurant, but it's a whole experience. You can really see the community when you go to a Raising Cane's restaurant. You see the workers working hard, and it's unlike an experience I've never seen before at a restaurant. There's no one slacking off, there's no one really, like, everyone loves their job there. Actually, and I saw, my history teacher brought this to my attention, Businessinsider.com posted a survey, which was conducted by Foursquare, that had like a study in all 50 states in America, and they asked, what is the best fast-food restaurant? And with only five locations in California, Raising Cane's was voted the best fast-food restaurant in California. It was actually, so, Cane's is not, so they're outcompeting fast-food giants like In-N-Out and Chick-fil-A. This shows the true impact of Cane's can have on the city and the people that visit the establishment. Now let's talk about the impact on a smaller scale. Last Friday night was RBV's senior night. My friend William, who's in the audience today, he is also a senior at RBV. His father asked him where he wanted to eat after the game. William responded with Raising Cane's. Fast forward two hours later, William, his two friends embarked on the one-hour journey to the Laguna Hills location in Raising Cane's. And that was at around 10:30 at night. This is not an unusual journey for many of us at RBV and for our families. We are willing to drive an hour and a half for some chicken. We are willing to drive an hour and a half for some chicken. If that's not impact, and if you can't see the impact it will have in Vista, then I don't know what else I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Cliff Kaiser, followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Good evening, mayor and council. I too have heard great things, never had the opportunity to eat at Raising Canes. My daughter and son-in-law enjoy it over in Lafayette, Louisiana. And I keep hearing good things about it and I'm glad that they're coming here to Vista. And although there's a, I've talked to a lot of people, they're not a real fan of bringing another drive-through to downtown. This is really on the outskirts of the downtown and it's just off the freeway. It's the most convenient place it can be to have a drive-through, I think. And if you're going to get people in the Vista, you got to get them off the freeway first. So if they know that's here, if they can see a sign, that'll all be a good thing. So I'm in full support of Raising Canes coming to Vista and the location that they are at. However, raised, the architecture issue was raised at the early design review. It was raised again at the planning commission by myself and was brought up by others as well, and I don't see that there's been significant progress here. What we're talking about is tearing down one of the few buildings in that area that actually looks pretty darn good, the Famous Dave's Restaurant. And you don't do that very often. It's very expensive to tear down a building and develop something entirely new. To tear something that's almost brand-new like Famous Dave's down and build another restaurant that's actually architecturally inferior is even more significant to me that we're going to make that step here. So I would encourage you to have Raising Canes up the standards on the architecture of the building, but other than that, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Cliff. Stephanie Jackel.
At the planning commission meeting, Ms. Roberts, who is here tonight, described how Raising Canes wants to become a part of the community. And she's even used the term that they want to enhance our community. Tonight, she talks about Vista's beautiful downtown. I found the architecture of the building at the planning commission meeting, no enhancement to our downtown. And unfortunately, the changes that have been made don't do anything else. It's disappointing architecture for something that could be so nice and which is evidently being looked forward to very much. If Raising Canes really wants to enhance our community, then please ask them to bring a truly beautiful building to our community. This is a major street, a major road in our community. It's a major location. Please have them do something that will really enhance our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That's actually our last speaker, so I see everybody has things to say. I might go first on that. I usually don't go first, but I'll go first. But I want to, I want to keep the project going forward and I want to, but I think we need to improve on what was submitted. I'm not real happy with the architecture either. I think it's the first thing you see kind of coming into town and I think we need to have, I don't know if they add some, don't add something, but it just looks very plain to me, the design. So I think we need to keep the project going, but I, if they would work with staff maybe to improve what's submitted, you know, and I think all sides, when I look at some of the other sides, they're very, one side is very plain, so I'd like to see, just because I think it needs to look, all sides need to look good and this. So anyway, that's my comment. So now I'm going to get on the road. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank you for your comments for the community and also the representative for Raising Canes for being here. Welcome to sunny Southern California. I've said this before from the dais, I'm not, I'm not in favor of a drive-through restaurant in this location. And I'm going to, this is a specific plan amendment and I have a copy of our specific plan, the downtown specific plan that was just updated in 2015, September 2015. And for the West Gateway, which is where the district in which this location is, the West Gateway District is one of the primary entrances to the city from State Highway 78 and includes larger-scale entertainment, retail and commercial services. A 15-screen movie theater, restaurants and complimentary commercial uses make this an inviting destination for residents and visitors. And as it was pointed out, that this is a prime location on a major thoroughfare entering into our incredibly beautiful and fabulous city. I want people to come into my city. I want people to see something from the freeway that is going to get them to get off the freeway and come into Vista. But a drive-through restaurant isn't going to get them to stop and get out of their car in Vista. They're going to drive through the restaurant and they're going to turn around and they're going to get back on the freeway a block away and keep going on their destination. So I don't see this project as enhancing that particular activity, which we like to have. I think, and I know that Famous Dave's Restaurant has been empty for a long time, and I have read the comments on the social media about, people really hate us because they think we had something to do with closing Famous Dave's and we had nothing to do with closing Famous Dave's. That wasn't us. That was between them and some other issues that they had in their business. And it's been empty for a long time, and I know that we want to try to bring something in there, but putting a drive-through restaurant in there, which is one of the reasons it needs an amendment, is a broken promise to the people of Vista. We promised something better than a drive-through restaurant, and I mean no disrespect at all to Raising Canes because we hear good things about your particular drive-through, but it is a drive-through nonetheless. And to me, it's a broken promise to the community of Vista. And it's not in a location that I would want to have a drive-through when you're looking at prime real estate off of the freeway and wanting people to get out and enjoy and walk around. It's right there by the Creek Walk, it's by the movie theaters, we've got other retail over in that area. So I'm not in favor of this project on any level, but I have to say, in looking at the renderings, even less so. These renderings, even with the additional wall painted white, are less than spectacular. They are, they are less than inspiring and inviting into our community. And I agree with the other comments that we can do better and as Vista's and in this area, we should expect and demand better architecture and pleasing and inviting. So I'm hoping that we can work on something that will look better than this. And I'm just sorry that we're breaking another promise to our residents about what we were going to put in this location.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
What was the genesis of the change? I noticed that Raising Canes has a sort of a trademark aspect of their building where they have this curvature to the portion of the building bearing their logo. And in the revision, they've got that squared off. I actually kind of think that their trademarked articulation looks better. Where did those comments come from?
So there was some discussion at the planning commission regarding their architecture and the direction was to bring back some improved architecture and make some color changes. So that was at the architect's discretion.
Was there a specific complaint from the planning commission or other city planning staff about that, I don't know what you'd call, there's probably a name for it. Do you have that trademarked? Well, yeah, it is kind of, it is kind of an arch of sorts. If you go back a slide to the original submission, submittal? Where you have the comparison between the proposed and changed? Yeah, there you go. You see where the logo is on the, in the center? You see how you have that kind of falling arch? Yeah. That slope to the roof there? And then we've just boxed it off over here. It got more boxy. I actually think the trademarked look, which I looked at other restaurants of yours and they've all got that slope, it seems to be kind of a trademarked design of your buildings. I actually think it looks better that way. It gives a little bit more articulation to the rooftop, if I'm using the right architectural word there. The other question I wanted to ask was, we got rid of the awnings and what is it in the revised drawing that I'm looking at there? Is it a different style of awning, particularly to the right-hand side of the building in the drawing? On the, on the upper, if you point to it?
Referring to this element?
Yeah, that, yeah, that awning right. There's specifically the one on the right, to the right? Yeah, that one. Not that one. Yes, that one.
That's part of the canopy that extends along this entire area. So we showed a picture earlier, which I can go back to.
Okay. So that's going to be like a pergola?
Yeah, that has lighting under it that is a covered patio area.
I see. Well, I agree with the mayor's comments. You know, I was just trying to Google on my phone pictures of award-winning fast food drive-through restaurants. I don't know if such a thing exists. I wish it did. I agree with Councilwoman Rigby in the sense that I really lament the fact that we're losing sit-down, wait-service restaurants because they're a gathering place for our community. They're a place to have a business meeting. They're a place to go out and exist with your family and friends, to go share a meal together. And I really actually appreciate that Raising Canes is still going to provide a nice dining room and opportunity for folks to do that. So I'm not, I'm not opposing Raising Canes. I actually think it looks like we found a really great business operator that has a really successful track record and I'm actually very excited that they want to invest in our city and something that really might actually be a driver of traffic, could really help the neighboring restaurants and businesses, and that's what we really need. But I'm really, I'm sorry that we have to install a drive-through. I don't want that, but that is a deal breaker for this operator. And I know we've met with the owner of this property a number of times throughout the years, and I believe that they've been sincerely looking for a new restaurant to operate there. I'm also very moved by the economic case for this style of restaurant. It seems to generate a lot higher throughput and therefore it's a lot higher gross revenue producer and it's higher profitability. And so I can understand what the impetus is here. Our job as the council is to fight for better places in our community, for families to gather. However, I also can see that there's a shift in the restaurant industry and it is true, I can't name as many sit-down style restaurants that are being built anymore. This quick-serve restaurant concept is the new direction, as much as I don't like that, and I really don't, because it's really diminishing the quality of our interactions and the places where community happens in our city and everywhere. But that being said, you know, if we cling to and stop this project, then, you know, we're going to lose a really great opportunity. So I'm reluctantly in favor of changing the specific plan, but very enthusiastic about the operator that we've selected here. And I hope that we can continue to work. And I would really like to see some ideas, photographs from the community of maybe some architectural ideas that they'd like to see incorporated. Are you, do you remain open to make some more changes? If there's still some things that could be done architecturally, are you open to continue to work with us on that? Sure.
Yes, actually, I was speaking with the senior VP of Design this evening and letting him know, you know, what if, what if this comes up and what our options were. We're actually, as a company, reworking a lot of our elevations. Those are all still in preliminary stages. The patio that you see here would be one of the first ones built of this new design, so we're very excited about that and think that'll be a great enhancement and another community gathering opportunity. I have made some notes here. You were talking about the arches, the arch, as we call it, you'd prefer that, stone on all sides, possibly higher stone, maybe? Is there a little more definition, you may be able to get rustic or, I mean, are you, is there anything in particular that we may be, I may be able to take back to the design team?
I don't.
About doing a number of renditions?
I don't personally, I don't know if, you know, that's the other thing I would ask the community is we, we need some help giving Raising Canes ideas because it's one thing for us to say we're not happy with. We really need to kind of show you and your architect what we would be happier with. I just looked too on Google Street View and I was trying to remind myself what a gorgeous structure that the Famous Dave's was. It's not. I mean, it's just not. It's covered with brown, you know, barn siding. You know, it wasn't, frankly, probably one of the reasons it wasn't as successful is it was set back with a parking lot separating it between the street. Your design is going to be much more visible. The Famous Dave's was not visible from the street, which is a big problem for any retail business. I think you're doing the right thing to move your restaurant closer to the street where it's visible, put the parking in the less visible place. I'd love to see you build a really gorgeous restaurant that the community really celebrates, so I appreciate you remaining open to input. Other than to say, I like the arch, and I don't know if everybody likes the arch, but other than to give you that input, I don't know what else I could tell you. But I am excited to join you at your grand opening and Joe and I are looking forward to the chicken, so.
Thank you. One of the challenges we run into unfortunately is sometimes I'll know it when I see it kind of thing. I think we all do that personally as well. If we could, we'd be happy to come up with a new elevation and get back with, with staff and let them take a look and work through them directly and.
I think you have a management trainee to here too, by the way. You should.
Say that again?
I think you have a management trainee in the audience.
Oh, yeah.
I might want to trade a business card.
This guy.
And I think I saw a movie about that trip to the, oh, never mind, maybe that was a different place. I know, I know there's two more speakers in the council that want to address this and maybe there's a few more after that. But certainly, at this point, we could direct staff to work with them and their architect to come up with some different elevations and rendering.
And I'll just say one thing before we go. I like, when I look at this, it looks kind of similar to what some of the things they're doing downtown. It looks like they roll up the door, so, you know, it opens it up to the patio, the inside, so I like that look right there. So anyway, moving on. Councilmember Green.
Raising Canes, thank you for coming to Vista. As a father of four kids, 18, 16, 14 and 11, we consume lots of Raising Canes. We drive to El Toro Road pretty regularly. There's not a trip back from Disneyland that we don't stop there. I have consumed gallons and gallons of your sweet tea. So your product is amazing and I do think that it will draw people to come to Vista because I drive, you know, battle traffic to get your chicken fingers, as crazy as it sounds. So totally understand, gentlemen. That's a good thing and excited for it to come here. I do agree with the planning commission. I sat through the meeting because this is something that really interested me, chicken and sweet tea, my jam. Definitely the exterior building elevations. I actually like that you did change some things. I agree with Councilmember Franklin on the slope, good, good idea on that slope. And I also love the idea of this outside patio. A lot of people who drive to Raising Canes, you know, I know you say your model is 25%. It might even be more than that. The inside of the restaurants are packed. We drive there, we get out, we eat our chicken, we take chicken to go. And I really think, I've looked at all of your designs online, as many as I could see as far as the photos of your businesses. As far as a fast food restaurant goes, I think that you guys will definitely make it look good. So I appreciate you coming here. I'm excited to have you here. I think it's going to be great for Vista and I am definitely looking forward to your grand opening and I'm definitely in favor of this project. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I'd just say ditto, I guess. Glad to see RBV Football's here representing. Great job, boys, going up there and great being here. I mean, I'm glad to see you guys are here and not afraid to speak. That's awesome. So the mayor and I took a trip up to Laguna because I wasn't too sure in the beginning. I had a lot of the same reservations I think some of the people in the audience have, to be honest, and the mayor did too. So we went up there to check it out and I thought the place looked nice. It looked, it definitely stood out from other fast food places, for sure. It's way nicer. But I think what we were most impressed with, aside from the food, the food was very, very good, was the service. You know, you guys do a great job of, you know, doing your hiring and finding good people to work at your place. It's a fun place. It's a lot like the In-N-Out experience as far as, you know, good service and happy place to go to. So I'm real excited. I think one of the biggest things I'm excited about is the fact that they're involved in the community. They've shown that to us and, you know, I'm looking forward to your support here in the city of Vista because there's not a lot of businesses that, you know, right up front. up front say, "Hey, we're gonna give back to the community," and it's gonna be dollars, you know, and I think that is very important in our city. I also do like the curved architecture on that, but I would encourage you to definitely work with our staff in improving the look. It is an entry point to our city, and that's gotta look better. But I will point out and remind everyone, this restaurant sits right across the street from a Chili's and a Staples. So, I mean, I, I'm not trying to, to, you know, downplay, but, you know, those are pretty successful businesses. I don't think they, they degrade our city at all, and I think this is gonna be a great addition to the city. The Caniac Club slide or what have you that you showed, that, I hadn't seen that, or if I had seen it, I forgot, but that's pretty amazing. If you look at the number of return people from outside of a three-mile radius, I mean, you're talking, you know, Carlsbad, Oceanside, San Marcos, people coming into our city. And true, some are gonna drive through, but as Councilman Green mentioned, you know, like the mayor and I, we sat down there, you know? So we went to the city, we looked around. I'd never been to that part of Laguna, and I have family that lives in Laguna. I'd never been to that area, so we were kinda checking things out, you know? And so anyways, I, I think this is gonna be a really good thing and activate that area. We've been waiting years to get a, a good restaurant there, and I think we have a good restaurant coming in. It's just a little bit different than what we envisioned, but you know, it's been years. Things change, and we gotta change with the times. People aren't going to sit-down restaurants as much as they used to. And if you got four kids, or five kids, or even one or two kids, you know, you know how expensive it can be, and that's why Chili's has done so well in the city of Vista, and I think Canes will do very well, because it's an affordable gathering place for families. I mean, we got a couple of young men here and their team that drove two hours or hour and a half or whatever to gather and have a good time. We should do that here in our city of Vista. They shouldn't have to go for an hour drive up the I-5. So I'm here to support it, and I make a motion that we move forward with this and that you'd work with staff in developing just an improvement on the look a little bit.
And close the public hearing?
I'll close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second, and if you, if the restaurant were here tonight, I'd go get some chicken. Yeah, I know, we could. So I see no other speakers, so I will ask for us to cast your votes, please.
That ma, that motion, sorry, passes 4-1 with Rigby opposing.
Okay, so moving on, let's see here. Public hearing number two, this is a hearing to consider a citywide development code amendment. Our public hearing is now open, and our community development director, John Conley, is gonna introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This started as some changes to our development code required for second units, accessory dwelling units that the state approved regulations for it earlier this year. In doing the change, I decided to talk to some of the other departments to make sure that we wrapped any changes that kinda needed to be made, so there's a fair, fairly comprehensive changes going through the code, but they're all fairly minor in nature, so I'll go through these as quickly as possible. Again, streamlining this to put them all together. If there's anything here that the council wants to pull, you can feel free to pull it out, and we will not, you know, approve it tonight, and we can review it separately. This item was also reviewed by the planning commission on October 3rd of this year, and they asked us to remove one item, which I'll cover. So I'm gonna walk through these individually. And in Chapter 1756, grading and erosion control, there's some typos that need to be clarified in terms of what a minor grading permit is. In Chapter 1802, definitions of our zoning code, we like to add a provision for accessory buildings. We currently limit those to 50% of the size of the main unit. This is a building like a shed or a garage, it would be accessory to the primary residence. We've had a lot of folks asked to build larger structures like barns and things and agricultural or estate zones that would be allowed for their agricultural use, and because of this restriction, we've run into problems, so we'd like to allow for that in certain conditions where it's permitted by right. The building would be non-habitable, and it would comply with the general plan. With respect to common usable open space, we currently have a definition that doesn't clarify that certain things like sidewalks and detention basins are not included in that definition. Common usable open space is supposed to be usable by residents of a project, so we're changing the definition to make sure that it clarifies what things are included and excluded from that definition for the review of multifamily developments. We've had a lot of issues with roosters. We've actually had a number of code complaints that have come in over the last 10 years. We have almost 360 code complaints that we've received regarding roosters in small residential lots, so the Code Enforcement Division asked us to look at this. The staff recommends clarifying that roosters are excluded from the definition of poultry, which is permitted basically chickens in any residential zone. In the smaller lots, we're recommending that that be excluding roosters, so that they wouldn't be allowed in lots lower than, or smaller than one acre in the agricultural zone. So the R1, E1, and R1B smaller-lot zones would exclude roosters, and in the A1 zone, we'd be making an amendment, which is one acre or larger, to allow up to two roosters per lot. With regard to second-unit requirements, these are accessory dwelling units. Again, there was state regulations passed that went into effect in January of this year, which requires us to update our code. Basically, we are changing the approval process to remove the planning's approval. They simply have to get a ministerial building permit, and we review those over the counter. We clarify that there are two types of accessory units. Attached or detached are allowed as new units in certain zones, R1, E1, and A1, but anyone that wants to build an accessory unit within the confines of their existing home, say, take a master bedroom and turn it into a separate unit, they can do so in any residential zone, and the state mandates that we allow for that, so we clarify those definitions. We also are modifying the setback requirements to show that we are consistent with state law. That means that you can convert a legally-permitted garage with no setbacks, and there are five-foot side and rear setbacks for any second unit built above a garage. Otherwise, you have to follow the main building setbacks within the zone. Parking requirements for second units have been modified. We have to, we require one additional parking space for a second unit. This permits tandem spaces in a driveway. You do not have to provide that additional parking space if you're within a half-mile of a Sprinter station, and if you convert a garage and remove the two covered and enclosed spaces, you can provide those anywhere on your lot in any configuration. You do not have to rebuild a garage to convert an existing garage. We remove standards regarding architectural style, because we have to allow for certain pre-manufactured units, and the exaction requirements for street widening and sewer connection fees are waived. In other words, you don't have to do street improvements in front of your home if you wanna build a second unit, or pay connection fees for sewer, and these are all components of the state regulations. Moving on, in the mixed-use zone, we're adding single-family homes to the list of permitted uses, and we're removing that from the requirement for a minor-use permit. In the C1 zone, we're revising the height limit to read 35 feet or two stories, whichever is less, which is consistent with the other commercial zones. Right now, it just reads 35 stories, and there's been some confusion about the allowance for three-story structures in the commercial zone, so I'm not sure when that was modified, but we're moving it back to be consistent with the other zones. In Chapter 1852, which regulates signs on private property, we're asking to amend the freeway-oriented pole sign maps to include the property along Vista Way between Valencia and Plymouth, which would be the potential home of a future car dealership, to allow for a pylon sign there. In 18, excuse me, 1854, off-street parking and loading, we're correcting a typo regarding dimensions of a parking space. In 1858, which is the catch-all section of our zoning code, we're modifying the home occupations to allow the MU zone to have home occupations. It's unclear that those are permitted in the MU zone, since it's a newer zone. We had also recommended removing the minimum residential building area, which is the regulations that require a minimum size of a residential unit. The planning commission asked us to look at that further, so that's been removed, and we'll bring that back at another time. In the condominium housing section, we're revising zoning categories, excuse me, to reflect current zones. Those are just updates. In 1866, special land uses, this is the regulations that regulate minor-use permits. It currently requires that those expire after 30 days. We're gonna change that to require as a condition of the permit, because there are numerous ones that have been issued that didn't acknowledge that expiration. And then finally, in the residential density bonus ordinance, there was a state law that was also passed effective this year that changes the affordability period for affordable housing from 30 years to 55 years, and so we're making that change as well. That completes my staff presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have two quick questions for you. On the one slide you showed, Chapter 18.31, second-unit requirements, and on your bullet point number three, continued, it says, "Replacement parking for converted garage can be placed anywhere on the property." My understanding was, we had an issue in the city a couple of years back regarding converted garages, and they were not permitted. When did we change that? Or was it something specific with that particular garage?
Right now, our zoning code requires that a single-family home have a two-car enclosed garage, so if, and before this was effective, if you wanted to convert your garage to a second unit, you had to build a new garage to house your cars to meet our zoning code. The state law supersedes that and says, "No, if you're gonna allow for a conversion of a garage, you have to provide the parking that's required on-site, but it does not have to be in an enclosed garage, it can be in any configuration on the lot."
I caught all that. My question was, when did we start allowing conversion of garages to living space?
We have always allowed that, as long as you build a new garage.
Okay, 'cause we, we had some problems in the city with some, some of those, so those must have just been individual problems, not...
We have huge problems with that in the city, where people don't obtain permits to do it legally, and that's the bigger issue, not so much the allowance for it.
Okay, 'cause I know that a couple of years ago, there was quite a few issues with some of those. So I was just wondering, when did we do that? So my other question for you was regarding the roosters, and you commented about the roosters not being permitted less than an acre.
Correct, that's the staff recommendation.
So I do know of some places, some homes, where they have roosters, and they might not be on a whole acre. I'm thinking maybe even half an acre to a third of an acre on a couple of them in their backyards. So are we allowing those particular roosters to be grandfathered, or do we have to tell those families they have to get rid of their little roosters?
Excellent question. If you have a rooster that was legally permitted under the current zoning, then it's considered a grandfathered, non-conforming use, which means you can keep the rooster until it deceases, and then you cannot replace the rooster.
And if it was, and if it was not permitted, then he's not allowed, but you, we don't know he's not there, we don't know he's there 'cause he's not permitted. I just thought I would ask, because I know I'm gonna get the question, because I know people who have roosters.
So if anyone has a rooster and wants to come into the city and show that they have legally established that rooster before this ordinance becomes effective in 30 days, we can certainly facilitate that.
I just wanted to know, thank you.
We have one speaker, Don Bartletti. I think he wants to talk about roosters, so maybe we'll hear our speaker. So, Don, we were on the rooster subject.
Good evening, Council and fellow citizens. I didn't think this would be poultry night, but here we are. I've lived in Vista quite a long time, and I stay here because I live in a tranquil country atmosphere. I don't live in a business district, I don't intend to live there. But there is an issue with this agricultural zoning and the roosters. Unfortunately, as you, if you look at the slide here, the arrow points to a rooster pen that's about 50 feet long, and over the years, there have been as many as 40 or 50 roosters. I don't know how many there are now, but here's where they live. So my, my request to the council is, if you're gonna allow roosters on a two-acre agricultural zone, unfortunately, the problem of the noise and disturbance and degradation of my quality of life and those others, neighbors, doesn't go away, because that slide shows that agricultural-zoned area smack up against half-acre zoning. So you've got, you know, as numerous roosters in the backyards of people who are excluded from that, and, and I think the reason the staff should consider it is because of the noise. We do not allow dogs to bark night and day, starting at 4:00 AM to 5:00, and then they take a break, and that's from 6:00 to 7:00. So I have an audio track to help you understand that if you live in tranquility or you stay inside, you might not understand the irritation that my neighbors and I feel. Can we play that audiotape, please? And until we get it up, let me tell you that the code Department of the City of Vista has been very cooperative. I've complained about this five or six years ago, and they...
Mr. Bartletti, where do you, do you live? Do you live in the city?
Yes.
Where at?
On Berkeley Way, District 1, two miles from here. 5:30 AM, July 13th, 2016, sound of wildlife and roosters from 712 Berkeley Way. So I'm standing in my front yard, and this is what I hear every morning. You wouldn't want that. The reason I've stayed in this property for 56 years is because of the sound of the natural wildlife, birds. But when I'm reading the morning paper and having a cup of coffee and listening to the sounds of the natural environment, a rooster is like somebody blasting a trumpet in your ear. Now, the issue tonight is, two acres or more, you can have two, two roosters, but the roosters are gonna be right next door anyway. What's the point? You've got to adopt an ordinance where there are no roosters near residential areas. Agriculture is, is a myth now in Vista. It's not wide-open country living, it's, in this case, a man's business, and he's selfishly guarding it and refuses to, to listen to me, and I'm applying, appealing to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll take that in consideration, thank you.
Mayor and Council, if I might add, based on the information that we received last night from Mr. Bartletti, Code Enforcement did go out today and issue an NOV to that property owner.
Oh, okay, okay. Deputy Mayor.
What was the, was it the noise ordinance that was violated there?
It's the sheer number of roosters on the property.
So, so we do have a, we have a rooster limitation ordinance that affected that thing?
There's an ordinance that limits the number of birds you can have, the 25.
So he's in violation of that number?
Correct, but I just wanted to clarify, per Mr. Bartletti's comments, the A1 zone is shown on this slide. He's over off of Mona Vista Drive or kinda north of that. There's not any A1-zone property around him. That property's actually zoned E1. Even though it's greater than two acres, it's zoned E1, and that would include the rooster restriction, so it would affect the property adjacent to his.
Well, as somebody said, we had more important problems than leashes to address tonight. I, you know, it's not always the most high-minded problems in society we face, but roosters, I could understand. Found a wild rooster, well, it was, was wild to me, running through the parking lot of my office. Tried to catch him, 'cause I had, I had a good idea where he was from, but he wouldn't let me get him over on Thibodeau Road. Oh, yeah, it would, it would've been humorous, trust me. You know, I think we oughta go a third of a mile from the Sprinter station on relaxing the parking requirements. Is that a state law thing?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I wanna, I wanna take a moment to tell all the people of Vista that are with us tonight and watching how much I lament the poor involvement of Sacramento in our zoning laws. They have no business in them, and they really mess up our community a lot. Not every community is the same, and we shouldn't all be subject to one-size-fits-all zoning regulations. So I'm very, again, in dismay of, of Sacramento meddling and things that it really doesn't belong in. There was something about a zero setback on a garage.
Any existing legally-permitted garage could be converted to an accessory dwelling unit, regardless of setbacks.
And so even garages, some garages can have a zero setback from the road?
There are some situations where they were built a long time ago.
Okay. So those are, those are grandfathered, not unlike roosters? Okay, let me see. The other thing I wanted to mention is, this is a lot to digest in one sitting... The other thing I wanted to mention is, this is a lot to digest in one sitting, and there, most of these items, we could dispense with pretty quickly. I wouldn't have minded having broken this up and dealt with a few of these, you know, sprinkling them in a little bit. It's just a lot to digest in one conversation. That's all I got right now.
Okay, I see no other speakers, so I would close the public hearing, and Councilmember Rigby.
Oh, I was just going to do that. I would move to close the public hearing and adopt these changes as presented.
Councilmember Aguilera.
I was just going to second that.
Okay, and then seeing no other speakers, I would say, cast your votes.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
That motion passes unanimously. Okay. That brings us to our public hearing number three. This is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the abandonment, abandonment and new dedication of open space and stream setback easements at 1765 Foothill Drive, parcel number 177-021-20. Public hearing is now open, and Community Development Director John Conley is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Kim Cruz, our right-of-way agent, will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you. For your consideration, staff presents a resolution to abandon existing open space and stream setback easements and approve a new easement at 1765 Foothill Drive. The half-acre parcel is located on the south side of Foothill Drive, east of Beverly Drive. It is currently undeveloped. The property owner has applied for the abandonment of the existing open space and stream setback easements in favor of a new easement configuration that will allow a small house to be built. In 1977, the original open space easement was recorded when the parcel was established by parcel map 6645. In 2006, a prior owner requested that the city abandon a portion of the original open space easement.
Excuse me for one moment. Councilman Green has recused himself from this hearing because he lives right across the street from the property and will not be participating. Thank you, please continue.
The city complied with this request while also requiring a new stream setback easement to accommodate creek setbacks. Earlier this year, the current owner had a new biological survey performed on the property. This survey found that the previously identified creek line was mapped incorrectly. The current owner now requests that the city abandon the existing open space and stream setback easements in favor of a new open space and stream setback easement. The existing open space and stream setback easements, shown here in pink, cover an area of 15,120 square feet. The new replacement open space and stream setback easement, shown here in green, would cover an area of 15,684 square feet. Pursuant to the California Government Codes regarding the termination of open space easements and the service easements vacation law, the following requirements to abandon the easements have been met. The Planning Commission made a finding of conformity with the general plan at its meeting of September 19th. The property owner has paid the open space easement abandonment fee to the County of San Diego, and notices for this evening's public hearing were published in the newspaper, posted on-site, and mailed to area residents. Staff recommends that the City Council approve the abandonment of the existing open space and stream setback easements in favor of a new open space and stream setback easement. This concludes the staff presentation. We're available to answer any questions you may have, and the property owner and project engineer are also in attendance if you have any questions for them.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yes, I had a quick question on, you know, when I was reading through the staff report, there was a section that said that the creek or the waterway was incorrectly identified or is it not there? Is it just in the wrong, different place than what they thought?
So the creek runs along the northern portion of the property between Foothill Drive and the main portion of the parcel. In 2006, when we revised it the first time, there was, it's sort of a flat site with some drainages that go around it. The drainage on the west and south side was believed to be the main creek channel, but it actually was mapped incorrectly. It goes along the north and east corner of the site and then sweeps to the west. So the property owner that did it in 2006 didn't rely on a professional biologist. The new owner hired someone based on a recommendation to map it correctly.
So, yeah, I used to live right across the street from this as well, a little bit further down, but, so I'm very familiar. And that creek doesn't carry that much water anymore, but...
It can.
It can. No, exactly. My point, I guess the, the whole reason I'm bringing this up is, so if we approve this, change this, and the great storm of, from 100 years, right, the 100-year flood happens, what happens if, if the house that gets built there floods? What liability does the city have?
None.
None?
We have, so it's really based on whether FEMA maps it as a flood hazard area. They haven't mapped this far back in the creek as a flood hazard area. We require them to do a drainage study that shows that they're going to have a pad elevation above the 100-year flood mark as best they can determine, and we'll review that and approve that as part of a building permit. It doesn't mean the house could never flood. There are houses all up and down that creek that are similar elevations that could flood in an extreme event.
Yeah, there's a lot of houses pretty close to the creek there.
We don't have any liability as a result of the easement. The easement here is simply to restrict where they can build on the lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other speakers, anybody? Councilmember?
I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, cast your votes. That motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Green recusing himself. Okay, thank you. We have one discussion item tonight, and that is the Solutions for Change Request for Funding. And our Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, with me tonight is Amanda Lee, our Housing Manager. She'll be providing the staff report, and then we'll be available for questions.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. At the August 8 to 2017 City Council meeting, members of the City Council discussed a funding request from Chris Meggerson, President and CEO of Solutions for Change, to fund a homelessness prevention program. In response to that request, staff was directed to prepare a financial analysis of the city's Affordable Housing Fund, the funding source available to grant the request. Before you this evening is the summary of the city's Affordable Housing Fund, which includes available and anticipated resources and obligations. Currently, the housing fund resources balance is $13,621,934, and total approved obligations of $5,480,424. The approved expenditures include staffing, operating expenses, funding for senior affordable housing site, and professional services. Over the course of the next fiscal year, the Commission anticipates receiving an additional $6,650,000 in monetary resources and estimates an additional expenditures of $8,390,000. If all revenues and expenditures relating to planned projects are realized in fiscal year 2017-18, the Affordable Housing Fund will have an available balance of $6,401,510 at year-end. Moving forward, staff will likely recommend that the city identify a preferred developer to rehabilitate existing units within the city. It is important to note that the city, that the housing fund must be maintained and expended in accordance with California Health and Safety Code Section 34176. The code limits spending on homeless prevention services to $250,000 per fiscal year. The request from Solutions for Change and any future homeless prevention funding will fall under this limitation. This concludes our presentation, and we are available for questions.
Okay, does the Council have any questions on this? Oh, okay. Okay, because he's saying, I brought this forward, and so I have to do this sort of thing. I'm like, what am I supposed to do? Okay, so I, I want to receive the report from them, and I wanted to provide direction on the funding for this. I, I am supportive of funding this for the next year, and I would hope that, for, I would hope that the rest of my council would agree with that. So I, I would, I'm not sure exactly where to go with that, but I guess I would ask you, I have 25 speakers, but I thought maybe I'd ask the council to speak first, and then maybe all 25 people won't want to talk, depending on how, how our council seems to be leaning. So Councilmember Aguilera, help me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when this first was brought up to me, you know, I definitely had some, some reservations because it seemed like we were funding operations and that, and I, I sat down with Mr. Meggerson in person, and we spoke by phone, by email, and we've had a lot of conversations. And I do want to thank him and Solutions for Change, your staff, your CFO, because I asked for a lot of information. I got the audit, which, you know, I guess they didn't have to provide that, but I mean, if you are asking for money, you might want to provide that. And I went through it pretty, pretty thoroughly. By the way, I did find one small error. So there's a typo, I think, but the numbers still match up. You know, I, I had some concerns about some decrease in assets on the balance sheet from 15 to 16. I spoke to Mr. Meggerson over the weekend about that, had a fairly good explanation for that, and I think I understand what's going on there. So I, I bring all this up because I want people in the city of Vista, all of you sitting out here, that a lot of thought has gone into this. But with the crisis that we're having here in San Diego County, you know, I feel that we, as a city, have to do everything we can to help our homeless. We do know that many of the people that have gone through Solutions for Change are some of our very own. I've actually have known families personally that I grew up with that went through there. We got to do our share, and I think this is a great way. And I know some of the council members, I won't speak for them, but may have some similar concerns that I had earlier. But we all know that Solutions for Change is trying to do the right thing, the right way, and solve, you know, the issue the right way, you know, in the way that I, I think is, is the best way, you know? They're, they're showing people how to fish, right? Instead of giving them the fish, and I, that's, that's the way to do it. And, you know, Vista has always had open arms to helping people, and solutions started here in Vista, and, you know, this is one of our own. And, you know, Chris is right now in Washington, D.C. He can't be here, and he's got some pretty heavy hitters in D.C. who are listening to what he has to say, and, and they think that this is the right way to do it. And I think that other cities will see that this is the best way to handle the situation. So I, I'm definitely in favor of the 140,000. I do understand, and I tried to make this clear to Chris, and hopefully his board is listening, you know, we can't do this every year. But I'm definitely willing to do it this time, and I think we owe it to Solutions because of the good job they've done.
Thank you, and I kind of got myself back together here. One of the issues was because Chris gave back federal money, which caused him to have a deficit in his budget, because the federal law requires that they have to let people in that are on drugs or, or, and alcohol. And when the families are trying to not be on alcohol and drugs and have children there and families, I, I think that he did the right thing in that case. But in doing the right thing, he, you know, shorted his budget by a lot, like, I think about half a million dollars, close to $600,000. So, so that, that's one of the reasons that I support it. And the other thing is, I, I started with Chris many, many years ago and for Solutions for Change, and back when he did just an emergency shelter, but, and so, I mean, he's done a really good job for Vista, and, and you know what? We don't have a tent city like San Diego. If you, you know, look at our, our city, we, we have homeless, but it's not nearly to the degree that, that other cities do. And so he helps in that case, and I, I can't imagine him not being here. So I, I think, I very much support his program. So with that, I'll, I got myself together for a moment here. Councilmember Green.
Congratulations. I was probably one of the most skeptical of giving this money. I met with Chris Meggerson several times. I met with Operation Hope as well, who is another local organization in our community. I wanted to get all the information I could before I made this decision. The money that he turned down was turned down by other organizations too. It's my understanding the feds knew, a lot of people knew that it was coming. So I really grilled him on that, like, hey, why weren't you prepared for it? You know, why didn't you have everything, you know, lined up? I also, as a real estate agent, I had access to tax records. I found out dude owns 29 properties. Solutions for Change, they have 29 different properties that they own. And I asked, why did you turn the money away? Couldn't you have used one of these other properties for the housing-first model so you didn't get yourself in this situation? All the questions that I asked Chris in regards to the finances and the numbers, I did feel pretty satisfied with when I was done sitting with him. However, my biggest reservation on giving this money was that it was going to be used for just general operating expenses. And how can I guarantee that this money was actually going to go to help get Vista residents off the streets? That it was actually going to be, you know, kind of like a fee-for-service type agreement? I wanted to have tangible evidence that if I give you $140,000, I'm going to have something to show for it, whether that's 10 families that I can point out that say, hey, as a city, congratulations, guys, we got these 10 families off of the street. In speaking with Chris, he has basically guaranteed me that his organization has the ability to house homeless families that a lot of other organizations don't have, and that by giving this particular money for this particular one-time allotment of funds, that it is going to be able to house Vista families and actually keep Vista families off the streets. For me, that's a huge thing. And what I'd like to say to other organizations is, if there's something that you can, you know, show us tangibly is going to benefit Vista organizations, and it's something that we believe in as a council, we're open. We're definitely going to be skeptical initially, and we're going to want to look at everything you have, but Solutions for Change has done a lot. They've helped tons of families in our community. We do have, you know, I don't know what the number was, $13 million sitting in there, $6 million after everything is spent. 140,000 isn't, you know, going to make or break us by any means. So I do feel like this money, you know, even though it does seem like a lot of money, 140,000, that if it's really going to be used, which is my understanding, we're able to give it with a fiduciary agreement. That would kind of be my stipulation, is that it's given with a fiduciary agreement that it, you know, is used for, to keep Vista families off the street. It's used specifically for housing Vista families, because I don't know of any organization that can really do that for our Vista families, which makes it seem to me like a reasonable request that I would be willing to grant. Thank you.
And I would say, we don't have, we don't have a lot of extra money, but this is, these are housing funds, and they'll help pay rents on, if I understand this right, help pay rents on the fam, for the families. So it's different than being just for operations. It's, it's coming from our housing fund, so. And then one other thing is, the program was selected as a national demonstration model, but, you know, so, which they're going forward with, and, and so he has, you know, that's why he's in D.C. right now, I'm sure, and, and we have people coming out from D.C. to, to look at the, or, look at it, and, you know, with their, with their farm and their, it's, it's just amazing, I think, what they do. They put everybody to work, you know, that doesn't have a job, and help, it's a thousand, a thousand-day program, and, you know, it, it just works. So, okay, so on to Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thank you. I am supportive of entering into an agreement with Solutions for Change and providing funding. And I will support that. I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the city manager to enter into a homelessness-housing services contract where two things are achieved. One, definable services are described to provide housing services to Vista families. And two, where a report at the conclusion of the term of the contract is made to the city. Doesn't need to be a long report, but I'd like to have a report detailing that the services that were contracted for were provided. I am strictly opposed to the city or... city or any governmental agency making a charitable contribution. That's, to support the general and administrative expenses of any organization is the prerogative of individuals who earn their money. As the government who acquires funds by compelling taxpayers to contribute to us, I think it's our job to have a definable service that we're providing for the community. And I think in this case, we can very much do that. I spoke to Chris personally about this. He agreed and thought it was a good idea. And I told him, you know, I think there's a way to build agreement around this kind of an agreement. I don't want to give a lot of definition and put a lot of restraints on the city manager. I want to leave it to him and his staff to define that agreement and to execute it. It doesn't not need to be lengthy, but I do want to, I want to be able to provide the citizens of Vista the knowledge that we did demand accountability for specific services received by the people of Vista and specific pricing paid for those services, and also be able to report later that we did receive those services. I think that should be fairly easy to do. I've discussed that with the city manager. He didn't seem to foresee any difficulty with that. But I think that's very important. And then, our job as the granters of these funds in a contract would be to oversee and have accountability that the services that we entered in a contract for were delivered. And then, we don't need to have a larger oversight duty over the organization itself as an investor who is supporting, a donor who's supporting their general administrative expenses would naturally want to have for any organization. And then, the other, other thing that I would add, that's, so my motion, just to restate, is to grant authority to the city manager for up to $140,000 to enter into a contract that he defines with specific services to be provided and a report to be produced at the conclusion of the term of the contract. That's the end of the motion. And then, let's see, I had one other thought I wanted to add.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. But, and I just generally wanted to say about Solutions, what a, what a great program it is. You know, I've been very involved, and I personally have supported numerous years, been, made a gift to support their general administrative expenses. I think it's a fine organization. A lot of people in our community have a strong support for Chris and his vision. And I very much endorse his fight against a one-size-fits-all policy. I do think there are some, there's some beneficial need for Housing First, but Housing First can't be a mandate for all homelessness service providers. There have to be places for families that want to live in sobriety, to raise kids, live next door to families who have also made a commitment to live in sobriety. And so, you know, I, I, one of the things I think we're doing here is kind of rewarding him for standing up for what's right. He has stood up for what's right, and I think it's really important. Housing, the, the one-size-fits-all mandate is wrong, and we should be fighting it. And this is our recognition of the fact that we support his fight. And so, I appreciate what he's done there. I think that's all I have right now.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree with part of what the deputy mayor said, in that I don't believe that as a government agency, that we should be giving any charitable contributions to a nonprofit organization. I've always been a supporter of Solutions for Change. They do a great job for the demographic of homelessness that they identify, that they work with. There are, are a lot of other homeless that don't fit their program that they do not serve. And that's another discussion that we should have as a city, because those are a lot of the people that we see on the streets that need, that needs specific help, partly because of what the state of California has done over the years in eliminating some of the state programs that were helping some of those individuals. But I also met with Mr. Meggason. I've met with him a couple of times. I had a lot of questions for him. Some of them were answered, but most of them were not. And some of the financial questions that I asked were not answered, and none of the information I asked for was, was received. So, I'm glad you guys got the information. I did not. And I don't know what to make of that. And one of the questions I asked was, as it was presented to me, because after the first time that this came up to the council, other homeless programs in the community have now come knocking at the door and said, if you're going to give them money, we want money too. And a comment was made that they knew this was coming, we all knew this was coming, and they had made provisions for it. And when asking what provisions Solutions had made, there was no answer for that. And there has been no indication that the needle is moving at all toward this direction of, of rolling back the requirements from the previous administration from Washington DC. There's, there's been, I have asked multiple times, there's been no indication. And I know that there have been multiple meetings back in DC regarding this rule about Housing First and how it impacts programs like Solution. There's no indication. There's been no discussion that has indicated that they're willing to change it. Nothing has, has been imparted to us at all. So, asking the city for a one-time sum, sum of money of $140,000, which is a lot of money for a city of ours with the programs and the, the things that we need to do. So, asking us for a one-time fix, a bridge, it was, it was presented as a, as to help bridge the gap for them, because they're short, having some other issues I, I'm told, but haven't seen. A one-time funding to bridge the gap with no indication at all that anything is going to be different next year raises some concerns for me as a city. And what is that going to do? Are we going to get hit again next year asking for this amount or more money? How many other nonprofits in the community are going to come up and ask for additional monies as well? So, these are, these are all questions I do have that are not answered, and there is no answer for many of them at this point in time. So, this is a very difficult question. It's not easy to, to have to balance these questions out with the needs of the community, and all the different needs of the different areas of the community. But I do appreciate the deputy mayor presenting it in a fashion that it would be a contract with Solutions for Change and not us giving a charitable donation. I would absolutely want accountability on how it would affect Vista community, the Vista residents, because I do know that Solutions for Change does do programs in other communities across the 78 corridor. I also know that they have asked for the same amount of money from the other four cities across the corridor, and three of them have declined. The only other city that gave them money was San Marcos. So, with that, they're not bridging the gap of their $600,000. They're only going to, if, if this passes tonight, they would get their $280,000, I'm not sure of the amount, if San Marcos gave them an equal amount of what they were asking. So, I don't know how they're going to bridge that, if, if they're not getting the funding from the other cities, or if they're looking, if they've been named a national model, perhaps there is other funding out there for them in the private sector that would be willing to help them bridge that gap. And so, asking the question, because when I met with him the last time, I knew that the other three cities had said, no, they were not going to present it to council, and they were not going to be offering any funds. How was he going to manage bridging that gap with those monies not being considered? And there was, again, no answer for that. So, this is a really very difficult, difficult decision for all of us up here to make. But I think that it would be palatable, because to me, on the first blush, it is not palatable as a taxpayer at all to do this. But if we do it as a contract with them, that it is significant, or 100% use for Vista residents, Vista families in our community, because I don't want to pay Vista money for something in Escondido or Oceanside. No offense to those cities, but my, my, my responsibility is to Vista. So, if we did it as a contract, as we specified what the money could be used for, if that's even allowed, and I don't know that it is, if it is not, I'm hoping the city attorney will say so, it is allowed. Thank you. So, that, that makes it more palatable. And I would want an in-depth report at the end of the year about how it was used beneficially for Vista residents. But that's the only way I can go along with this, because this is not something that we should be getting into, especially with, there, there's, there's nothing on the other side of this jump. There's nothing, there's no bridge. There's nothing back there that we know of at this point. So, those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have, actually have 25 speakers here. So, I don't know if you, you kind of heard, you know, where the council sits. So, you know, you need three votes in order to approve it. So, what I'll do is, I'll just, I'll call each of the speakers, and if you, you want to talk, you have three minutes.
There was a motion that was made and seconded, and do we?
Well, we have 25 speakers.
Oh, do they all want to, oh, you asked them to speak?
Well, some of them might want to, who knows? I don't know how, if they want to speak for it or against it or whatever. So, I think we need to give them, at least give them the opportunity to do that. So,
Madam Mayor.
And then we'll, what?
Perhaps, and I think we've articulated that we seem to be leaning in the direction of supporting it. Are there any who came to speak against it this evening?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I was just going to call if they, they could say, no, no, no. And then, if they want to speak, they can do that. So, how is that?
That's a good idea.
If I call each one. Okay, that's what I was, that's how it was going to proceed. So, I'll start with David Kreen. Do you, I don't know if you want to speak or not speak. He's going to speak. You have three minutes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Kreen. I'm the board chairman for Solutions for Change. I really want to thank you for the time that you've given me tonight. I also want to thank you for your public service to the city of Vista. Thank you for that great feedback. Thank you. Message heard. Message understood. Councilwoman, you'll get those answers. So, on behalf of the executive team, there's no reason to go over what Mayor Ritter has certainly provided a great deal of feedback on, on why Chris is not here, the challenges that we faced. But we are really truly grateful for the time, the consideration that you've all given. You've looked at a lot of stuff. I know that Chris has been working very hard to get you that information. Once again, you'll get that information to your satisfaction. And together with your help, and really was born here, we're making a difference. We're transforming lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Brett Schatzenbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the chamber, I just, real briefly, would like to encourage you to support the Solutions for Change tonight. I sent you all a letter of the board's recommendation and the fact that this isn't general fund money. This is, you know, affordable housing money that they're requesting. And with the unique situation, as the mayor pointed out, that they've found themselves in this, in this spot right now. You know, the captain of the sheriff's department was at our board meeting just last month and shared how the number one issue they're facing right now in Vista is transience and homelessness, and that with the hepatitis A situation that we're all seeing every day in the newspaper. And we have a proven track record here with Solutions. We'd like to encourage you to support them. And, and, and with this fee-for-service model that you're talking about, the chamber would support that model very much so. But we encourage you to support them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Fingerlin.
Thank you. My name is Mark Fingerlin. I've been a longtime supporter of Solutions for Change, and I've been on the board for the last three years. My daddy taught me, when you're asking somebody for something and they agree with you, it's time to shut up and go home. So, I only want to say thank you for the support you've given us. I heard a couple of comments before, in the other presentations earlier, about amenities. And my hope would be that you agree with me that Solutions for Change is an amenity in the city of Vista. We heard some discussion about architectural things and making the city more attractive. And I like to think you also agree with us. That's one of the other benefits of Solutions for Change. So, with that, I'll take my own advice. Be quiet. Go home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen Higgins, followed by Morris Vance, followed by Cindy Taylor. And being there's so many speakers, if you could, you know, you could line up, you know, when I call you, could you, could line up over here so we can move it through?
Kathleen Higgins, Executive Director of Operation Hope Vista. I know we've all been speaking. We've all been talking about this. I'd just like to reassert that I am also on the executive board of the Alliance for Regional Solutions, which is a group of 74 North County organizations who work with the homeless population in some way. And we have been working with the regional task force to try and figure out how we are going to adapt Housing First within our community, because as the city of Vista founded Operation Hope in 2003, we are also a homegrown organization, and we also serve families. There are people in this room who have come through our program and then gone on to Solutions. We have had clients who are in shelter this year for more than 200 days. We are effectively becoming a transitional housing program, because there is no housing available, and we refuse to stop drug testing. There are multiple programs in North County that do drug tests, that do provide housing. We are all serving the same people in the same way. We all serve different aspects of the housing, homeless community. Less than 30% of the clients that come through Operation Hope would be a match for Solutions for Change. And the clients that are a match, we absolutely immediately get them on the list and participate and collaborate as best we can. We would ask that that collaboration continue. We would also like to extend another invitation to have Solutions for Change participate in the regional, regional task force, because they, for the last 10 years, have not. If you choose to fund this, we just ask both Operation Hope and the other Vista organizations who are providing homeless services, receive equal consideration. I thank you for your time. I thank you for having met with me and answered our questions, but also having listened to what we had to say. I think my parting comment will be, this last year, through the coordinated entry system, more than 9,000 individuals were counted as homeless in San Diego County. And for the first time, inland North County had the second highest number, second only to the city of San Diego. 33% of that 9,000 is in inland Sandy, North County. That's 2,200 individuals who are homeless right now.
Thank you.
I'm asking you to consider all of them.
Thank you. Morris Vance, followed by Cindy Taylor, followed by Dick Muir.
Yes, I'm Morris Vance, and I'm an emeritus member of the Board of Directors for the Operation Hope. And I know that the previous speaker said that if you choose to fund, well, I think it's really obvious, you've already chosen to do that. And so, that I feel as though that there's only a finite amount of money that's available to provide for homeless housing in the community and the services to the homeless community. I think both organizations have done a great job. I've worked with the Solutions for Change in the past and helped them in their initial funding. And I've also been helping with the Operation Hope. Both are worthy organizations. And I think that being, that there is only a finite amount of money that's available, that the council should look inward to see if that can be shared among the two groups. Because I think we're, we're, both groups are hurting for funding, and both groups are in need of funding. And we're not going to be able to provide the services that we normally do if we don't receive it. So, my request is, is that, as I understand, there was something like there were $250,000?
$250,000 is the maximum each fiscal year that can be used for homeless prevention strategies.
Okay, well, I would hope that the council would then be willing to provide an additional amount or an amount that would, would help us as well in the provision of homeless services here in the community. We've done a good job. It's your, it's your program. You're the one that started it. The city of Vista was the one that got together with the, the faith-based community and put together Operation Hope. So, don't abandon us now.
Thank you, Morris. Cindy Taylor, followed by Dick Muir.
Good evening. I just want to thank all of you for taking interest in our programs and for coming out and seeing them firsthand, watching our clients work the programs, see how we change lives. and seeing them firsthand, watching our clients work the programs, see how we change lives and work at it. As Morris said, Solutions for Change does good work. We feel that we do excellent work as well. If we were able to get funding and we asked for a consideration of equitable funding, we would be able to subsidize housing opportunities for our clients. We are not a housing developer. We don't own properties. And so funding from you would give us a critical piece of being able to put them into their own apartments or homes and go into the next level, because that is such a critical piece right now. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Dick Muir, followed by Mary Donovan, followed by Bee Palmer.
I am Dick Muir. Been around Vista for close to 40 years. I've been on the board for the last two and a half years. I'm going to reiterate pretty much what has been said by our other board members. It was mentioned earlier that if you teach a person to fish, it will be successful. That's what Operation Hope does. That's our goal. We take people who don't know how to function in life. We help them. We help them learn how to write resumes. We help them learn parenting skills. These are all goals that we have. We need the money just as much as any other organization, and I would certainly request that we be given consideration to share the pot of money that's available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Donovan, followed by Bee Palmer, followed by Leanne Abraham.
Hello, my name is Mary Donovan, and I've been on the board for five years, I think. We also respect solutions. We respect you, we respect your decisions, but we would like to have some consideration for the work that we do at Operation Hope. We have computer training, we have education for the children, the tutor program, and we do teach them to go out and get their own, their jobs, and they call us back and say, oh, I got this job, I got that job. We work with Lifeline, we work with Solutions for Change, anything that benefits our clients. That's, that's what we want, because we're all in this together, you know? We don't want to see homeless people at the last count. I think we had 20-some children. Some of those are babies, and the thought of them being in a car in the wintertime, that's what gets my heart. So please think about us, Operation Hope, as you also think about solutions. Thank you for your time and your support in the past. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Bee Palmer? Okay. Leanne Abraham? Okay. Edna, is it Drasty? Leanne Twig? Oh, this one doesn't have a name on it. Oh, it's, it's, okay. Okay, Amber Gann. Is Amber here? Did I say it right? Oh, there she is, okay.
Hi, I'm Amber Gann. I'm just requesting that you vote yes, which maybe you already did, for bridging the gap for Solutions for Change. I'm a resident and I'm an employee also. Before Solutions for Change, I was homeless, living in my car, either in jail or prison. I'm a lifetime Vista resident. Now I, since coming into Solutions for Change, I've had a full-time job for a year, not on probation or parole. I paid my taxes for the first time in three years. I'm a single mom of three. My daughter's actually here. She goes to Rancho Buena Vista. All three of my kids go to school in Vista. I've been a resident of the program for a year and a half. They provide me with clean and sober housing. I've been accountable, and that's it. So.
Congratulations to you, Amber. Miranda Gann, do you want to, Miranda, why don't you talk also? Do you want to talk?
So, good evening. My name is Miranda Gann. I am 17 years old and am a senior at Rancho Buena Vista High School. I'm the oldest of three siblings and am a resident at Solutions for Change, as you heard from my mom. My family and I got accepted into the program in May of 2016 when I was 15 years old. Before being accepted into the program, my siblings and I were living with our grandparents, and my brother was living with his dad, and my mom was living in her car. Solutions for Change has benefited my family and I because my mom is able to obtain a full-time job, we have affordable housing, and most importantly, this program has helped my mom become clean and sober and be the woman she is today. I feel that this bridge of funding would be beneficial to not only my family and our community, but other families applying to fix their lives. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Miranda.
Thank you.
Victoria Estep, followed by Jennifer, I think it's Pankas? And by Jeff Hamilton.
Hi, good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Victoria Estep. I am also a resident of Solutions for Change as well as staff. I am now property manager for Solutions for Change. I just want to say that since I went through the program, I have gained custody of all three of my children back. I have, of course, gained a full-time job. I am also now a taxpaying citizen, and I am approaching, or have just approached, two years, nine months, and three days clean and sober. This program has done wonders for myself and my family. My daughters now trust me again. They see that the transformation that I've undergone since being in Solutions for Change, and I have so much gratitude for this program and what it's done for my family. And I also see the, the look in the people's faces when they first come in and I meet with them to do their initial certification, and I see the transformation that they go through every phase of the program, and it just gives me hope that this, this change can be done for many more citizens for the city of Vista. So I really appreciate everybody's vote yes for this Bridge the Gap funding, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, is it Pankas?
Pankas.
Pankas, okay, sorry. Followed by Jeff Hamilton, and followed by Debbie Bryson.
Okay, I'm going to be really brief. I would like to say Operation Hope is an amazing organization.
No, you got to talk to us up here.
You guys do great service work, and I'm all about collaborative efforts, and I was, I've been thinking for the past couple of weeks how I can portray the necessity of this investment, because that's what this investment, to me, it's not only in the families of Vista and our children, but in the community as well. I'm a graduate of the program, and I have eight years clean and sober, and like recently I had a life experience. I had to have an emergency surgery, so I was off work for a week. And so my immediate, like, okay, I'm clean and sober, and I'm doing the right thing, and I'm doing all this stuff, but like, oh my gosh, am I going to become homeless again? Like, what do I, what do I do? And all these things, and it's like, the years and years that I've been in solutions and creating my support network and all of these different things have acquired me to get disability insurance. I have a savings account. I have money in my savings so I can be off work for a week, and I can do that stuff and take care of my kids, so I'm not back out on the street. And I think that is the, that's the tangible evidence. You know, I'm a resident of Vista, my kids go to school in Vista, my daughter's a senior in high school as well, so she's that next generation, and you want tangible evidence, there's your tangible evidence, and there's hundreds and hundreds of families just like that. And Deputy Mayor, you stated that the Sacramento regulations were really messing with your, the city during zoning issues and things like that, and one-size-fits-all approach, especially when it comes to our city, doesn't work. And we know that historically, one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work, especially when it comes to City of Vista, because we are special and we are unique, and our residents really have a lot of care and concern, and the homeless population is a huge ordeal, especially homeless families. So I just want to take the time to say thank you for upholding the city, city's values and ethics, and thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you. Jeff Hamilton, followed by Debbie Bryson, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, council members. I want to say thank you. It sounds like we're heading in the right direction to bridge the gap. I do, I've been to a few meetings and met with folks, and I always forget to mention that being homeless is no fun. I, me and my son tried many places to get accepted, to get off the streets. At the time, when I was accepted into Solutions Change, there are no other programs for men. And San Diego County, were no other programs at that time. So they were, they gave us a place to go to. So I want to thank Solutions for Change, thank your, thank the council members for your consideration, and let's bridge, bridge the gap. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Debbie Bryson, followed by Cliff Kaiser, followed by Richard Mathis.
I work in the jail system and was in, with a group this, today, and one of the things that we do at the end of a session, we had a Bible study on teaching them how to pray, and at the end, we ask for prayer requests, and of course, many were moms, and I just had to come to this meeting because one of them has four children, and her main prayer request was that she would have a job and a place for her children to live. I've worked in rehab and homeless situation since the 60s, which included picking up hippies at, on, at on-ramps all across the country. I've spoken at rehabs across the country. There is nothing like solutions, and I've been to many programs, many, nothing. 140,000 for a city to say, I would think you would put banners and say, we are so proud that we can invest. And I'm ashamed of the city, cities that said no. I'm ashamed. I would be ashamed. My sister's been mayor twice on a big city in, in Los Angeles County, a friend who's a, who's mayor in a big city in Orange County, and they are doing nothing like solutions. Nothing. There's nothing that touches it. People get real help, they get housing and training. I've been to the housing, visiting some of these moms. You do not want a druggie living next door to your children that have been homeless. You do not. And they made a big, big effort. I appreciate Hope, but they don't have the breadth. They're not, they don't, they're not affecting the deepness and the breadth that Solutions for Change does. To offer them, you know, some money, that, that would be great, but they're not affected by this, this thing that was just passed. So I know I sound passionate and emotional, but I'm in the trenches. You know, I'm in the trenches, and these people have been in the trenches, and without someone reaching deep, you can't just put a Band-Aid. I've also been to meetings with the welfare system where they just do patch jobs and throw money. They don't have people investing like solutions, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser, followed by Richard Mathis, followed by Stephanie Vincent. Cliff here still? I don't see Cliff anymore. Okay, is Richard Mathis here? Then followed by Stephanie Vincent, followed by Francine Sanchez.
I'm Richard Mathias. Born in Vista, raised in Fallbrook. Many years, my father's Purvis Marshall Camp Pennerland, my mother's a Marine. I was born and raised a Marine. Long story short, I lost my wife with three, four children, came back home to San Diego County to the family, finding how horrible it was to get a home back here again. I worked in community over here in Ocean Hills for seven years. I had contracts. I got, I had a house. When the economy collapsed, it all went down, and then my wife passed away, and coming home to the home I'd always been, other than the five years in Stockton, was unbearable. Solutions for Change, you stole my, my line. I'm a fisherman, and you're absolutely right. They teach you everything. I came back home with three little girls. My son went to college, and I was pulling my hair out of my head after the tragedy of losing their mother. I didn't know what to do. I was completely disillusioned. I am in complete agreement with what one gentleman said about increasing the funding, because I came here and I was put into a boot camp of Operation Hope, and that's exactly what it was. They pulled me out, and they sent me back to the field of Solutions for Change, and these two organizations are incredible. This isn't, it's, it's hard to see the tragedies that didn't happen when these two organizations averted them. You don't see it in, when these tragedies don't happen, you don't see the progress that is made, but you do see it in the statistics later, and this isn't just a solution for, for charitable or keeping people in their homes. This is also economic solution as well, because every person, every parent that has one to two to three or four children, that you helped throughout, you help every one of those children, those, one of these, all of those children are maybe less likely to go to jail, commit a crime, and you're going to see it economically throughout your whole community, every person that you touch. And I've seen women coming in there with five children, and I've got three children myself. I was in and out of the bottle, and I didn't know what to do anymore, and these two organizations helped me and got me back. I'm ready to start my own business again in Vista like I did back in, in the early 1000. I was working through Ocean Hills, and I lost it, but they got this back for me again. I'm ready to start a landscaping business after I go through a program, a previous responsibility, but I can't say more for this organization, and it got me. My father just passed away in July. His birthday was yesterday, he was about 87 years old, and he was very adamant on me staying in Vista, and I didn't want to give up. My children have wonderful schools here, and I don't want to leave, and they kept me here. He kept my father's dream alive, keeping me here in Vista. He wanted me to stay, and I have my whole life, I'm 50 years old, and my whole life almost has been spent here in, in Vista and Fallbrook.
I need you to wrap up.
Yeah. Anyways, in conclusion, thank you for both these organizations, especially Solutions for Change, and keep giving my daughter a home.
Thank you. Thank you. Stephanie Vincent, followed by Francine Sanchez, followed by Joshua Tenda.
Hello, everybody. My name is Stephanie Vincent. I actually did not know I was speaking tonight, so I just thought that I would let you guys know that my parents are in the program. They went in when I was about 14, 15 years old, and I didn't actually realize what they went through until I recently just got into the program. I have twins, and without solutions, I really don't know where I would be. They completely saved my life and my children. And my mom and dad have been together for over 30 years, and they had addiction and alcohol in their lives, and, you know, me and my three sisters' lives, and we've been homeless for a long time, and that's what I grew up seeing. And I was taken away by CPS, and so was my little sister, and that's all I knew. Once, excuse me, once solutions came into my mom and dad's lives, that's the only time I've ever seen them change, ever. My mom literally crawled up to the building, and it changed her life. Same with my dad, and they are together now. They're property managers, and I've never been proud of them before, ever. And it's great that they're in the program and they are property managers, and now I just got there. So I am super proud of my parents, and I've never been able to say that before. So it is definitely something for a family-building, life-changing organization, really. So, thank you. I hope you guys vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely.
Ms. Francine Sanchez, and then followed by Joshua Tenda.
Hi, I'm Francine Sanchez. Thank you so much for your support of Solutions for Change. I am a resident at Solutions right now, and I was not an addict. I lost my savings during a bad pregnancy where I got sick, and then my husband at the time got affected with, started showing signs of schizoaffective bipolar disorder, and then he became the addict, because it's a family disease. So having a program, a highly systematic program, that's a safe place, that when I, when I left a very dangerous situation and found myself displaced, I had a place that I could come to and rebuild my family and go out there and be a good citizen. We give back to the community. We're volunteering at Dia de los Muertos this weekend. I'm getting my life out of survival mode and into a place where I can really make an impact as well. So thank you for your support for this really systematic program that transforms lives.
Thank you. Thank you. Joshua Tienda. And he's our last speaker.
Mayor, councilmembers, I just, um, wondered if you'd reminded that, um, we're dealing, um, with a epidemic right now, uh, hepatitis and it's, it just shows you, um, what, what happens when you wait too long to, when you are reactive to a problem. And it's, to me, the, what the city council is doing is, we don't have a crisis as in San Diego, but this is a, this is a preventive, um, measure. So we don't have to face anything that, that San Diego's, uh, because this is a program that actually fixes the problem the right way. The, the wrong way is, is, um, is just, um, housing. Uh, I know that it has its place and, and, uh, Section Eight housing has its place, but if you just throw money at it, it will continue perpetuate the problem. The, the generations will continue to live in that state. The, the correct way is to help, um, one generation overcome, um, that addiction so that the next generations will, will be better off, you know? And solutions, I think, does that. And, and it's way cheaper to, 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 um, to be, uh, preventative than reactive. And, uh, that's all my, um, all the comments I had.
Thanks, Joshua. We appreciate it. Okay, that's our last speaker, so I'm going to go to over here, Councilmember Green.
That was, uh, previous. I'm good to go.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I do have another question for you. We've heard from Solutions for Change and we've heard also from Operation Hope and a lot of support for both. What other organizations dealing with homelessness do we have in the city of Vista? Do you know?
Currently, we do Funda Alpha Project. They are, um, they do a cup, a variety of different, um, programs within the city. Specifically, we fund them through CDBG funding where they go out and do outreach of county homelessness. But they also, um, have Casa Rafael and some other transitional housing, um, places as well. Those are the ones that are the known. They're, they're, um, also North County Lifeline. They don't house homelessness, but they provide services for homeless people.
And you talked about CDGB funds. How many of, of the rest of these organizations receive funding through that?
Operation Hope also receives funding through CDBG. We have, um, through the Alliance of Regional Solutions, we offer, everyone does their fair share contribution towards homelessness and Operation Hope is Vista's selective, um, organization and we do twenty thousand dollars or whatever the, we, we generally try to do twenty thousand dollars or whatever the amount the grant allows in that year through the cap, but the last two years it's been twenty thousand.
So you had said earlier that the cap allowed is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Out of our, um, that's a different funding and this is out of our housing fund. It's through California state law that you're allowed to spend up to two hundred and fifty thousand on homeless prevention services.
Okay, so the other fund you were just talking about is something different?
Yeah, it's a federal government fund. That is correct.
Okay. Just trying to anticipate who else we'll hear from asking for monies and we have a very limited amount of funding. And even tonight, asking for a hundred and forty thousand dollars and Operation Hope is asking for equitable, well, that, that's above and beyond what we're allowed to give by thirty thousand dollars. So I'm thinking out loud. Thank you.
Did I, did I have a motion? I had a motion and a second? Okay. And I see no more speakers and so can I call for the question?
Madam Mayor, uh, there was a request to restate the motion. The motion was to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Solutions for Change in an amount not to exceed a hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, with specific services, uh, specific homelessness housing services to be provided, uh, to serve Vista's homeless population. The specifics to be defined by the city manager and, uh, and then for a detailed report to be provided at the conclusion or at whatever intervals, but at least at the conclusion or other intervals that the city manager, uh, will negotiate and determine.
Second?
Still second.
Okay, cook. So then can I call for a question? Please cast your votes.
That ma, that motion passes four-one with Rigby opposed.
Okay, so that is our last discussion item. So we're going to move from there on to our, um, oral communications. Do I have, I have no oral communications tonight, so that's that. So then I'll move on to our remarks. Um, I'll, I guess I'll start first and then I'll go on down. I have, I have, um, I just wanna let you guys know about, there's a, there's, um, Sandag or Caltrans actually is going to do a, it's called a Variable Speed Advisory, a pilot program. They're gonna start on, um, SR seventy-eight. And they're gonna post signs in six locations on eastbound seventy-eight. They're gonna ask people to drive forty-five miles an hour so that they, so that it doesn't, um, so when you drive, people drive really fast and then they come up to the traffic and then they stop. So they're gonna ask them to drive forty-five miles an hour to keep traffic moving along. So they're gonna try this. It's like a, it's a kind of a, um, I, I was trying to think. I thought they were gonna start the first of the year, but I'm, I'm not sure the date of starting, but I just thought it was kind of an interesting thing that they're gonna start doing this, this program. They just told me about it today and so I, I'm sure, I think they probably told me when they're gonna start and I forgot. So I'll, I'll let you guys know when, but I just, it's, it's coming, so. And then, um, on these other comments, um, oh, Friday is fine, I guess, it's a tongue twister. Fine Free Friday is this Friday, October twenty-seventh, the Vista Library. So bring in your overdue books and your DVDs without paying penalties. I'll have to tell my granddaughter. I don't know if she has, she's got books. I'm not sure if they're overdue yet or not. But, um, the tickets are still available for the Betamax, San Diego's favorite eighties cover band. That's this Friday night, October twenty-seventh, at the Moonlight Amphitheater. And information is online at moonlightstage.com on that. Celebrate Dia de los Muertos on the Day of the Dead, of the Day of the Dead in a family festival at the Rancho Guajome Adobe on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from ten to two. The Day of the Dead is a traditional Mexican holiday that celebrates, remembers and honors those who've departed. So for ticket information on that, you can call a number. It's, um, seven-six-zero-seven-two-four-four-zero-eight-two. Or check online at sdparks.org. That's sdparks.org. And on Halloween, the city's hosting a trunk-or-treat event in the Civic Center Visitor Parking Lot from four to six. The event is open to the public and it's free. There will be kids' crafts and treats as well as fire, sheriff and public works vehicles on display. And the counters here at the Civic Center will all have treats for the kids. Information is available on our website at cityofvista.com or you can pick up a flyer on the first floor reception desk. So those are the announcements and I will, then I'll go on down the line. I'll say, Councilmember Aguilera, what have you got today?
So, I missed the meeting two weeks ago and, uh, I was actually in Atlanta representing Sandag as, uh, transportation, that is, as well as NCTD. So it was an apta meeting, which is basically an expo on, uh, transportation. So we're looking at buses, trains and, uh, vehicles to replace the Sprinter. So, as I've mentioned in the past, we have, uh, many buses that need to be replaced, uh, for NCTD as well as we have diesel locomotives that need to be replaced, as well as someday, the Sprinter needs to be replaced. All ending, yeah, I mean, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. So I, I thought it was, it was a good idea to go out there and actually see the vehicles that we could potentially purchase. So I'm glad I went. I wasn't too sure if I wanted to go, but, um, they let you tour. I mean, they actually bring these trains into the convention center. It's a huge convention center. But I got a chance to go through, uh, a potential DMU replacement for the Sprinter. Very, very nice. And, um, it's made here in America, which is a good thing because that's one of the problems we're having with the Sprinter right now is it's a, a German-made vehicle and replacement parts are not being made anymore for it. So anyhow, um, one of the other benefits was to see what's out there in the future. Autonomous vehicles, they, we got to ride in those and, I mean, it's kind of freaky to get in a vehicle that has no driver in it. And, uh, people walking in front of it and it would stop. So it was pretty neat to, to see the technology that's coming down the road, as well as the electric buses were pretty interesting to see as well. But I will report that, uh, NCTD probably is not purchasing any electric buses anytime soon. They're twice the price of the CNG vehicles that we currently have. And, um, you know, the maintenance is still an issue with those, as well as the fact that, uh, there isn't any standards yet in the industry, uh, for manufacturing them. And so some of these guys were telling us that the vehicles would go three hundred miles or two hundred and eighty miles, but, uh, on the side, they would let you know that it's really gonna be more like a hundred and twenty miles, you know? So anyhow, uh, a lot of progress, a lot of technology coming down the road. And I just thought I would give you a report on the future of transportation in, uh, North County.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report out from the Sandag Public Safety Committee meeting last week. Uh, there were the usual monthly reports from the Police and Sheriff's Department, the Fire Chiefs, et cetera. But this year, we, we had, this month, we had our annual report from the County Coroner's Office. And, um, I'm not gonna go into all the specifics about what the coroner's report said, but it was actually pretty fascinating in that they're, they are taking different data this year in different categories that they haven't before, um, to categorize the twenty-two thousand deaths that we had in the county of San Diego last year. So if you are inclined to read an actually quite fascinating report, uh, from the County Coroner's Office, it's on the county website. And it's a long report itself. It's like three hundred pages, but there is a summary of it that goes through the various categories of, of deaths. And most intriguing were the ones classified as other, where they couldn't put it into a particular category. So anyway, we had that, we had that presentation and there was a lot of discussion back and forth on it. It was very informative and very interesting. So just gonna put that out there for some light October reading.
Deputy Mayor.
Have any comments?
Councilmember Green.
All right. Uh, first of all, thank you guys all for sticking around tonight. Props to my RBV dudes, front row, staying the whole time, talking about how much you love chicken and, uh, every time I looked down, you made me smile. Garrettson family, good job back there. One other thing I wanted to say, I get to walk around City Hall all the time and see our employees and unfortunately I had to recuse myself when Ms. Kim Cruz came up. Just so you guys know, Kim Cruz is one of the hardest-working women in this building. Every time I walk by, she's standing up with papers up to her eyeballs. So props to having awesome city staff here. Um, it was a great night with my colleagues. I love hearing your guys' opinion. Um, I think that we made some real progress tonight. It was awesome. We talked about dogs, chickens, roosters, code changes and homelessness. So overall, uh, we're doing good stuff for Vista. Hope you guys all have a great night. Thank you so much.
City Manager.
I do wanna say congratulations to the Leadership Academy, Academy participants, excuse me. Uh, it was a great academy this year. They were very enthusiastic. And if anybody is interested in joining the next academy, which will start in March, I'd encourage them to contact our city clerk, Kathy Valdez, or go to thecityofvista.com to sign up. And we'd love to have them participate. Uh, there is a prescription drug takeback day on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. You can drop off your prescription drugs at three-ten, uh, Sycamore, which is the Walgreens. And that'll be between ten AM and two PM and the drop-off will be in the parking lot. And, uh, there is a business, uh, Chamber Business Showcase on Tuesday, November seventh, from four to seven in the Morrisby Vance Community Room. So there's more information on that with the Chamber.
Can citizens always drop off their unused or unwanted pharmaceuticals at the Sheriff's Department?
They can. They can drop it off at the Sheriff's Station at three-twenty-five Melrose, South Melrose.
That's great.
During business hours. And then last, uh, we're very excited that we have our new Public Works Director who started a week ago Monday. And if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to have Kuna Mutsami come up and introduce himself to you and, uh, tell you a little, just briefly, about where he came from and, uh, now that he's here in Vista. So, Kuna.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure and also my honor to be here today. I've been in public works and construction for about twenty years. And then also my last position was in the South County with the city of National City at the, as the Assistant Director of Public Works and Engineering. You know, I'd like to thank the city for the opportunity, uh, and to serve its citizens, you know? I look forward, you know, to giving my best and, you know, to many years of my work here.
Thank you, Kuna. Any questions for Kuna?
It's nice to meet you. Welcome, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Have fun with those public works, guys.
Okay, and attorney have anything tonight?
Uh, nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
What about city clerk down there now? Neither one? Okay. Okay, so with that, I, um, but, um, tonight, um, kind of ended on a sad note. Richard Jimenez, um, died. He was, um, the president of the Fire Protection Board. He'd been on there for thirty-five years, since nineteen eighty-two. He's a retired Marine Colonel. So teacher with the Vista Unified School District for several years. And so we'd like to adjourn, um, in his honor and send our regards and prayers to his wife, Julie, and the family. And so, um, I wanted to adjourn in his honor tonight. So with that, we are adjourned.